We are one minute away from air. The live stream has started. I would like to remind all council members to please remember to turn on your microphones before you speak. One minute to air. Thirty seconds.
Good evening. It's seven o'clock, and I want to call this meeting of the Durham City Council to order, and certainly want to welcome everyone here tonight. I'm having a little connectivity problem here, but in a second I will get it, and we will move on. It's... My Wi-Fi is not quite coming in, but it will in a minute, so please bear with me for one second. There we go. All right. While we're waiting for my computer to come up, my friends here on the podium have been helping me. Really glad to see everyone tonight, and we are gathered together to do very important work on behalf of the residents of Durham. And so as we get ready to do that work together, please join me in a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. Councilmember Reese, would you please lead us in the Pledge of the Flag?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, colleagues, city staff, and all the residents here in the chamber again and at home. If I can remember the words, I will now say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, councilmember. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role?
Mayor Shul.
Here.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Frelon.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, we usually do announcements at this time, but I think that we may have Representative Price with us virtually. Do we know if Representative Price is already with us? Great, I'm seeing some thumbs up from Ms. Wallace and Ms. Wade. Thank you. Tonight, Madam Clerk, can we... Or whoever is running this operation on this part of it, please make Mr. Representative Price available to be seen and heard, and we have a proclamation in his honor tonight. There's Representative Price. Representative Price, can you hear us and see us all right?
I certainly can. Glad to be with you.
Great. I am so honored to be reading this proclamation, and once I do so, we are anxious to hear some words from you. But let me just start by saying personally what a fabulous representative you have been for us in Washington all these many years, and we're just so grateful to have you as our representative all of this time. All right, have we lost our Representative Price, or is he still with us? There he is. Okay, great. I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas Representative David Price was first elected to represent the 4th District of North Carolina in the U.S. House of Representatives in 1987, and whereas before he began serving in Congress, he was a professor of political science and public policy at Duke University; and whereas his constituents know him as a strong supporter of education, accessible health care, affordable housing, clean air and water, and improved transportation alternatives; and whereas he has served on the Health Appropriation Committee and is the chairman of the Transportation, Housing, and Urban Development Appropriations Subcommittee; he has also served on the House Budget Committee and is a member of the Appropriations Subcommittee on Homeland Security, State Department, and Foreign Operations; and whereas he secured federal appropriations for the build-out of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency complex in Research Triangle Park and construction of the new North Carolina National Guard and Emergency Management Headquarters; and whereas in Durham, his appropriations leadership funded community projects such as the Durham Farmers Market, Trosa Residential Facilities, and renovation of historic Parish Street; and whereas David Price has been one of the nation's leading champions of both affordable housing and public transit, and has won billions of dollars in spending for these crucial needs; and whereas Representative Price has been a wise, true, and constant advocate for Durham for more than three decades, always just a phone call away; and whereas North Carolina's 4th District has benefited greatly from Representative David Price's contributions in Congress, his leadership and vision will be sorely missed, yet his legacy will continue through the many accomplishments achieved through his years of service. Now therefore I, Stephen M. Shul, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim November 15, 2021, as David Price Day in Durham, and do hereby commend its observance to all residents of our city. Witness my hand this, the 15th day of November, 2021. Stephen M. Shul, Mayor. Representative Price, thank you for your amazing service to Durham and to our whole state and our nation, and we look forward to your remarks.
Mayor Shul and councilmembers, I've never had anything like this done to me or for me. This is a wonderful resolution, and it touches me. I am very, very appreciative of the kind gesture and the kind words. And of course, I think back as you were reading, Steve, of the many things we've done together. It has been a lot of years of work with just a wonderful community. The districting and redistricting being what it is, we've had various configurations of the 4th District, and of course, when Durham wasn't in the 4th District totally, I've had a cordial relationship with G.K. Butterfield most recently, and Tim Valentine many years ago. I've shared the representation of Durham at various points, but have also, of course, had responsibility for the entire county at various points as well. And I've come to appreciate the community as one that's just unique. It is a uniquely, I think, active community, caring community. Durham has always had a kind of rough-and-tumble politics. You know, it's not like we agree easily on everything, but that isn't the point. The point is that people care about the community and care enough to advocate strongly and in the end to work together, to pull together. I want to say just a word, Steve. I'm not going to speak very long, but I certainly want to say a word about your service and what a unique pleasure it's been to work with you. It's no secret, of course, that our retirements are coinciding here, although yours is effective earlier than mine. I have another 14 months on the glide path here of the congressional term, but there have been many, many tributes richly deserved of Steve Shul in these recent weeks as we contemplate his retirement. When I think of Steve's advocacy and his work for the city and my work with him, I think particularly of our efforts, not always successful, but persistent efforts and efforts that continue to bring diverse transportation alternatives to Durham and to the Triangle region. Light rail, we had a struggle with. You have presided over increased and enhanced bus service, and that's going to continue. And I hope that within not too long a period of time, we're going to have a new start, a new new start, which will be commuter rail across the Triangle from west Durham all the way to Garner and possibly Clayton. And then that can interconnect with the bus service and give us what we need in the way of a start here, a serious start on diverse transportation. So I identify you with that struggle, Steve, and I identify you also with outspoken advocacy and action in the area of gun violence, a scourge for Durham, a scourge for this country. And I give you a lot of credit for highlighting that issue and being very persistent in seeking for remedies. And then, my strongest memory, and this has to do partly with my role here as well as your role, but I just have a very strong memory of your advocacy for that housing bond and how important you just stressed, and you drove it home, and you said, "We have to pass this thing. We have to pass it convincingly, and then we have to act on it. We need to use those funds." And sure enough, Durham did that, and Durham led the way in doing that, led the way in the Triangle and in North Carolina. And of course, still, we're working out all that can mean for us. And I'm hopeful that we will be adding another piece here in Washington in the regular appropriations bill and also in the so-called Build Back Better bill, where we can have more federal resources to draw on, and communities like Durham can deal with this. It is, I think, our greatest municipal challenge, certainly at the very top of the list, to bring housing to the fore as a front-burner issue and to get our public housing in better repair. We've had McDougal Terrace as a kind of tip of the iceberg in terms of that disrepair and how dangerous and disgraceful that is. And we have long waiting lists for rental assistance, for vouchers. We have a shortage of housing supply, both rental housing and startup homes. We need to incentivize the production of housing. We need to give a boost to homeowners. And of course, the ongoing challenge of avoiding evictions and providing rental assistance for people who have run into difficulty, particularly in the context of the pandemic. I mean, it is a huge challenge, and it isn't just one approach. It's an approach across the whole spectrum of housing needs. So Steve, you've been passionate about that. Your council has been as well. There are many, many members sitting there with you who have understood the challenge of affordable housing and have risen to the challenge. And I, in the months remaining in office, I want to be a good partner in terms of putting, of course, federal resources together, but also strategizing with the community, community leaders, about how we can apply for some of this elderly housing that's where funding is newly available, how we can get the Section 8 rolls reduced and get more landlords participating and get more housing choices for those people. It's just something we can all dedicate ourselves to. And that does remind me that on this call is my longtime staff member and aide and friend, Tracy Lovett, who is a daughter of Durham and has served when Mel Watt was the congressman. Tracy got her start in congressional work with Mel and has worked with me all these years since then and has been a very, very powerful housing advocate in her own right and has helped many, many applicants apply for funds and also steered people in the right way when they wanted to do something about housing and many other things, but housing in particular. So I really am grateful for this recognition. I feel like the... Not too many members of Congress are as fortunate as I am to represent a community that does as much to help itself as Durham does. You know, federal programs, federal, I've often said, federal support doesn't just come down like manna from heaven. First of all, there isn't enough of it. But secondly, federal support comes from those who pursue it and who can form the partnerships and take advantage of it. Years ago, when I was first starting, I was on the, what we called the Banking and Housing Committee. And at that point, I didn't represent Durham, but I sure knew a lot about Durham. I taught at Duke. I had... And of course, Durham, who has always been a community that's been a heavy user of housing programs and housing funds. So I, early on, learned about the Self-Help Organization, and we put together some demonstration programs that showed that with the right kind of support, with the right kind of counseling, with the right kind of encouragement, that people that, you know, sometimes didn't get considered for homeownership could be homeowners. They certainly could be, and we needed to make those opportunities available. And then one thing led to another. We have, over the years, done work with the residential facilities over at Trosa, the work in renovating Parish Street, dealing with the food desert on Fayetteville Street and clearing the way for a supermarket coming in there. A lot of work with Bill Bell and the late Ed Stewart through the UDI organization. Good, solid community projects. I won't go through the whole list, the Tobacco Trail and a varied set of projects, and every one of them, every one of them indicative of community initiative and community partnership and community support. So it's just immensely gratifying to work with a community that has that kind of energy and that kind of compassion and that kind of wish to be an inclusive community and to make things better. So Steve, you exemplify that. That's one thing I mean to say. But I also want to say to the council and the people you represent that it is a wonderful community and a wonderful community that has been my privilege and my honor to represent, and that I'll do my best to represent effectively in the 14 months left before I finally pass off the baton. So thank you so much for this generous declaration and resolution, and I guess all I'll say is I will try to live up to it.
Thank you, Congressman Price. Thank you so much, Congressman Price, and enjoy the last four and a half hours of David Price Day.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, that was great. And we do have another ceremonial item tonight we're going to move to next, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Reese if he will do the honors for our Veterans Day proclamation. And Councilmember, at that podium, according to our mask mandate, you are 10 feet away from others. You are vaccinated, and you may take your mask off.
As you wish. Well, good evening, everyone. I'll be reading this proclamation honoring Veterans Day due to the vagaries of our schedule. Of course, Veterans Day was four days ago, but luckily, I believe we have online someone from the Durham County Veteran Services Department. Is that right? Great. And she'll share a few words with us when I'm done. Whereas each year, our nation pauses to pay tribute to the many men and women who have pledged their allegiance to the armed forces, and whereas their loyalty to the military is evident in their commitment and willingness to make sacrifices to protect our country; and whereas their faithfulness and courage commands respect, as many have stood in the face of our country's adversaries to protect our freedom; and whereas the United States Congress passed a concurrent resolution on June 4, 1926, calling for the observance of November 11 with appropriate ceremonies and later provided in an act approved on May 13, 1938, that the 11th of November in each year should be a legal holiday celebrated and known as Armistice Day; and whereas on June 1, 1954, Congress made an amendment replacing armistice with veterans; and whereas November 11 is Veterans Day and is set aside as a legal state and federal public holiday to honor our nation's veterans; and whereas it is hoped that we are inspired and our bond as a nation is strengthened as we gather on Veterans Day to recognize the patriots in the city of Durham and across our great nation who have defended our rights, values, and freedoms. Now therefore I, Stephen M. Shul, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim November 11, 2021, as Veterans Day in Durham, and hereby urge all residents in Durham to observe Veterans Day by displaying respect and gratitude for our veterans, both living and deceased, through appropriate services and ceremonies recognizing their great sacrifice. Witness my hand this 29th day of October, 2021. We now have Lois Harvin Raven, who's the Director of the Durham County Department of Veteran Services. Is she with us now?
I am. I am. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Shul, Mayor Protam Johnson, councilmembers, city attorney, and listen audience, I want to take just a brief moment to say thank you before I yield the remainder of my three minutes to my staff who did the groundwork to get this proclamation before you and the council to make this moment happen. Jonathan Croons, who's in the house, if he would stand, please. Jonathan's the Durham County Outreach Bureau Veteran Service Officer, and Hannah Watts of the City of Durham helped make this moment happen. As the Director of Durham County Department of Veteran Services, a native born of Durham and a 10-year Army veteran, this is a personal and professional honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of all the veterans and active-duty service members of Durham and Durham County in recognition of their valor and their sacrifice. The proclamation is not just intended for Veterans Day, but an opportunity to recognize our veterans 365 days a year, and that is what you all have done tonight in honor of all our veterans. So I am profoundly appreciative for you all for the proclamation you have rendered tonight. Jonathan Croons will accept the proclamation on behalf of Durham County Veteran Services.
We're going to get you a nicer version of this. Thank you all again for taking this time tonight as part of the civic agenda to recognize the importance of veterans in our community. Whereas with Memorial Day, we take a moment to recognize those veterans who've paid the ultimate price. With Veterans Day, we celebrate all veterans, whether they were on active duty, whether they're reservists, National Guard, whether they serve in the Commission Public Health Corps. Our veterans are at the core of what keeps our communities safe and protects our freedoms abroad, and when their military service is over, they come back home and they serve as leaders in their communities. And so that's why it is so important to recognize their contribution not only to our national defense, but also to the leadership of our communities. Many of our veterans serve as leaders in county and local government. In fact, as part of the celebration that we have had this month, we've done a virtual ceremony, but what we're also doing is making a special outreach to veterans who serve in county and city government to contact us and let us help you with accessing your VA benefits. You have served and given so much, so let us help you with getting the benefits that you've earned and are entitled to. Our phone number is 919-560-8387, and we invite all veterans, surviving spouses, dependent children of veterans, to contact us for help with benefits. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Croons, Ms. Harvin Raven, and Councilmember Reese. We appreciate you. All right, we'll now move to... We're going to move now to announcements by the council, and I'm going to invite Councilmember Frelon to come to the podium, and you can use that one if you'd like, and give us a few words, maybe more than a few. Let me also recognize we have at least four former city council members here with us, Ms. Wagstaff, Mr. Moffett, Mr. Davis, and Ms. Alston. We are so glad to have you. I hope I haven't missed anyone, any former council members, but we're so glad to have you here in the chambers with us tonight. Thank you. Councilmember Frelon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Steve asked me to say some words about my service. I will be retiring, like you, at the end of this month, and just want to offer some remarks about this really tremendous privilege of serving on Durham City Council, and it's beautiful to see so many former members of this very privileged group here. So I wanted to acknowledge the councilmember colleagues that are here and our future colleagues. Well, not colleagues, I guess I won't be on the council. I will be a constituent, but Leonardo Williams and Mayor O'Neill, thank you for being here today as well. So colleagues, community members, and staff, my heart is so full of gratitude as I reflect on the wonderful opportunity that it's been to serve on this council. It has been a really enriching experience, one that I can only relate to nurturing children. And I saw Steve had his grandchild here. The enriching, and what I mean by that is the enriching aspects of kind of pouring yourself unconditionally and wholeheartedly into something so generative for the giver, and that's how I feel about my service. And of course, there is an exchange. When you serve, you tend to think of the giver and the receiver, but for me, what has defined my service on the city council has been the lessons, the connections, the relationship, the blessings, and the community that service has offered me, and I'm so very deeply humbled and empowered by that connection to my home and to be a part of this wonderful legacy. On my first week of service, I was really nervous. I wasn't sure if I could hang, quite frankly. We had some intense conversations that first week, some you may recall, and disagreements over policy, and I think it was my first or second meeting, we went into closed session. We were briefed on something really intense that brought me to tears. Some of my colleagues may remember that day. And I remember all of my colleagues and the city attorney, we were on a Zoom call, and deputy manager, Paige at the time, you were deputy manager, were present, and I had to ask if we could stop because I was overwhelmed with emotion. And I was told, one of my colleagues was like, "Hey, you know, this is the job. We have to look at these things unflinchingly." But I couldn't unflinch. I couldn't do it. And but I couldn't unflinch. I couldn't do it. I was flinching uncontrollably. And I remember talking to my wife afterwards, like, you know, am I cut out for this? And she reassured me that my vulnerability in that moment was a strength and that my connection to community, my ancestors, my background as an artist, were all very important and will influence my service in ways that were needed and important. And I've seen that to be true. And that was not the last time that I flinched. A lot of people don't know, as city council members, you know, we are charged, we're responsible with safeguarding our city. Whenever gunshots ring out in the city of Durham, we get a message from the city manager, which I didn't know that kind of going in. And just imagine, you know, you're with your children or you're out on a date night with your partner and your phone lights up and it's another notice about a gunshot victim, a child, a daughter. Sometimes it might be a name that you recognize, a member of our beloved community. And in this unprecedented year of 2020, you know, of shootings, of COVID-19, there are these highly unusual desperate times to be in this job and to do this service. Violent months, not just in Durham, but across our country. And we are responsible for making these strategic, empathetic, visionary investments in public safety and in safety and wellness and affordable housing and transportation. And it is a really heavy responsibility and a big job. And my first week, I'll tell you, was not the only time that I broke down. I remember getting calls from people like Omar Beasley, who was the Chair of the Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People at the time, you know, and weeping over some of what we were observing and experiencing in the community, talking to residents and feeling the frustration and the fear in my body, you know. You talk to people, you feel it. And in my empathy, like Lauren Olamina, who's a character in this science fiction book called Parable of the Sower, written by Octavia Butler, there's this character who has the superpower of being able to feel the people around her. And feeling kind of crippled by grief was sometimes, was really hard. But there's one special thing about Durham, and Congressman Price said it really eloquently. There's something special about this community. And here's the thing about Durham and really about the black freedom struggle. Because a lot of that violence that I'm talking about, it's happening in the black community. We embody trauma and have endured our share of harm and despair. But we are also the architects of resiliency and transformation. And you see that on the ground in Durham. Those same communities where violence feels endemic, we have community organizers. Some of them right here in this room, Ms. Wagstaff, some of them right here in this room, who are doing the work, community organizers, coaches, mamas, elders, artists, youth, who know what they need to keep their communities safe. And I was so proud to work with those folks and to gather people and present "We Are the Ones", which is a really important piece of municipal legislation that I'm proud to bring to council. And with the support of my colleagues, we passed, with the support and help of our staff, we passed measures like guaranteed income, which is going to start next year, something I'm so proud of and excited about. I'm proud to have hired the best city manager in the country, Wanda Page. Can we give her a round of applause? Like, we did that, y'all. Charlie's talked about that. We did that. We're implementing our Safety and Wellness Department. We've hired an outstanding new police chief. We've expanded violence interruptions. We've opened affordable housing on Willard Street. We purchased wheels, Fun Park, for crying out loud. That's just so exciting to me. We've launched the Safety and Wellness Task Force and designed a framework for the American Rescue Funds. We did that. In fact, another new experience, I think that is a first for the city of Durham. Mayor Protem Johnson and I participated in a restorative justice healing circle where we, you know, kind of heard testimony about as an alternative to punitive criminal justice as representatives of the city. So we did that. We put in the hours, we did the research, we listened to our constituents. We hosted forums and budget healings, right, City Manager Page? And we marched in the street. We did our press conferences and strategy sessions. We raised money. We cried, we prayed, we argued. Lord knows, we argued, you know? But we did it because we care about Durham. Congressman Price, I wrote it down when he said it. He said, you know, we didn't always agree. There's the rough and tumble politics of Durham that he talked about. But we come together to advocate. It's important that people care enough to advocate strongly. That's something that I've learned in my service and that I really appreciate. You know, we fight and we argue because we care and we served. And I'm so grateful and so blessed to have served alongside you colleagues and alongside this wonderful staff. And I just want to thank you again so much for the opportunity. And I wanted to congratulate also my colleague, Mayor Schul, for your retirement. You've done a wonderful job. You've been an amazing mentor. And I look forward to hanging out with you in retirement. So thank you so much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I've been vaccinated and boosted. Do I have your permission to remove my mask?
Yes, you do, Ms. Wallace.
All right. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem Johnson, members of the city council, City Attorney Ray Burke, City Manager Wanda Page, members of the viewing audience, those who were in person as well as those who are joining virtually. I would like to welcome you back to the people's house. Tonight is our first night, again, coming back to in-person meeting. And Mayor Schul, I will tell you that several people contacted our office and wanted to know what we were going to do for you. What were we going to do for you? And so we know the impact that you've had on the organization. We know the impact that you've had on this community. And we did not want to let the opportunity pass us by to do just a little bit of something for you. I've made some commitments to people that we will be brief. And so in light of that, you've identified a couple of people in the audience who are here specifically for you. So at this time, I'd like to call up former councilmember Eddie Davis, if you could step to the podium and share a few words regarding Mayor Schul, please.
May I take off my mask also? I've been shot and boosted. Thank you very much. I'll stay within the two-minute period of time that the Chief of Staff has given me. Let me just say that if I go back 50 years ago, as a student leader at one of the campuses, one of HBCU campuses here in North Carolina, there was an organization that we founded called SEBU, which stood for Student Organization for Black Unity. And it was founded to try to make sure that there would be some kind of equity in terms of the funding for those five state-supported schools as well as the other schools across the state. We did not get very much support from many campuses other than those that are HBCUs. But we did get one from Duke University. And at that time, one of the student leaders at Duke University was Steve Schul. So I want to go back 50 years and thank you for the advocacy that you and your colleagues at Duke put forth for those HBCUs back 50 years ago. I also want to thank you so much for the time that we shared here on this Durham City Council. Thank you for your service on the school board. Thank you for your service in many other institutions here in Durham and across the state. Thank you for your support for the Moral Monday movement and so many other movements that we've had here in Durham and across the state of North Carolina and around this nation. So I want to thank you for that and let you know how much I appreciate it. And I know I'm not alone with that. When I left my house today, my wife, who is a member of Delta Sigma Theta, talking about how she and you and several other people combed the city for the homeless count in the middle of the night, I guess a couple of years ago, when she served on a committee with that. And she talked about how Steve was running real fast to try to get to places and that she knew, that he knew, where people were going, where people were hiding, where people were living. So she wanted me to thank you for that. And finally, thank you so much for allowing me to have the opportunity to work with so many other wonderful people here in Durham as we celebrated the sesquicentennial, the 150th anniversary of the incorporation of the city of Durham and all that went along with that. So with all of you around the country and around this nation, around the city, around the state, I want to thank you for the work that you've done. Steve Schul.
Thank you, Eddie.
At this time, we're going to call up Councilmember Don Moffett.
I wish that I had the polish and aplomb that my colleague Eddie Davis does, but I have to look at my notes, so. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Madam Manager. I came tonight to say thank you for your public service for sure. Your four years as mayor, your six years on the council before that, your four years on the school board. Those years are just an indication of your commitment to Durham, of the lifetime of service to making Durham a better place for everyone. And I got to sit by you on council for five years, and I learned a lot. The first thing that happened when I joined the council, in fact, it happened right before I did, was that Lincoln apartments closed. They put everybody out on the street. And I saw you take phone call after phone call. You'd hurry back from a work session to go back through all your voicemails because people knew they were looking for a place to reach out to you. And I watched you work tirelessly to find all of those people new homes. So with an apologies to George Bernard Shaw, you see things that should be, and you ask, why not? Why the hell not? The protests that Eddie mentioned, Sharon Harris, Moral Mondays, you focus on immigration and housing. You have boundless energy, and I really admire that. You were a publisher with The Independent. You were a music producer with Hopscotch, a runner. Y'all may not know, you may, he just won his age class in the recent five-mile race. And I can remember when I sat by you on the day, I was reminded of your work as a college professor when you'd pull out full-page sheets of notes to get ready for your remarks. You might even have two sheets. I was always really proud that I read everything that was provided to us when to prepare for a council meeting. But I knew that the work that you did to prepare went far beyond that, that you did further research, talked to more people. And so I know you're looking at retirement. I know you're looking forward to spending more time with your family. But I don't doubt you already have two plans and more ideas, maybe a podcast, maybe a book. But that's the future. Tonight, thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done to make Durham a more caring community. Thank you for caring deeply yourself and for always, always walking your talk.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Representative Austin?
Good evening. I also am going to look at my notes. So good evening, everyone. Mayor Schul, members of the Durham City Council, city staff, it's great to be with you. Before I start, I do want to thank and acknowledge the work of Councilmember Freeland. Thank you for your contributions to the council and congratulations on a great tenure here. Mayor Schul, when you announced this past summer that you would not be seeking reelection, there was an immediate outpouring of gratitude for your public service. My response, at least online, was more kind of, okay, everyone chill out. He's still got six months left. He needs to get back to work. There's more to do. All right? Well, since then, you have most certainly done just that. Collectively, you all passed a very important budget that, among other things, will advance critical affordable housing goals, and you continue to lead us through this pandemic. So the moral of the story here really is that you must have read my tweet. And while I do appreciate your public service on this council and as mayor, because I have personally marveled at your effectiveness as a policymaker and a leader, your seemingly bottomless well of compassion, and the real impact of your vision on the people of this city, my message tonight to you is that even after December, you'll still be on the clock. Our kids are working poor. Folks who feel disenfranchised can and will continue to need and benefit from the qualities and ideas that you've brought to your role as mayor. And I know that you will keep Durham at the center of your work and of your future vision. Steve, you've already heard me say this, but I think it bears repeating for everyone here and everyone listening. Serving with you and alongside you has been a masterclass in preparation, in active listening, in perspective, and the simple act of follow-through. You embody good governance, the consistent and precise deployment of leadership, humility, and hard truths. And you do it all with a reassuring smile. So thank you so much for your service to the city. Please enjoy tonight, and we will look forward to what comes next. Thanks.
Thank you.
Awesome. So Mayor, it would not, it just wouldn't be fitting and appropriate if we did not have some participants join us via Zoom. So at this time, I want to recognize Senator Mike Woodard, who is joining us in the Zoom. Senator Woodard, take it away.
Thank you, Carmesha. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you assembled at City Hall. I'm sorry I could not be with you tonight, but here is your state budget. I have an all-nighter to pull before we vote tomorrow, so you'll know why I'm here in my office in Raleigh. You know, people used to always say that Bill Bell was a cool mayor. And we know why, you know, that certain swagger Mayor Bell had and the way he carried himself, the way he danced occasionally where we could get him to dance. But I'm here tonight to suggest that Steve Schul is also a cool mayor. Politicians, you know, we often run for certain things. You want to be a peacetime president or a wartime president. You want to be an education governor. You want to be an infrastructure mayor or council member. But nobody runs to be a pandemic mayor or an explosion mayor. Those are things that are handed to you, and how you respond to them often defines so much of your work. Steve Schul had both of those things occurred during his tenure as mayor. And he handled those in an unflappable manner. And he showed so much incredible calm. And we were just so lucky to have his hand on the rudder during a couple of incredible challenges during his tenure as mayor. And that's why, to me, Steve Schul will always be a cool mayor. It would have been easy in those times to lose your cool, to sort of get hot about things. But not Steve Schul. He was always cool. But Steve's tenure as mayor will also be remembered for so many other things. And I think first among those is the incredible work this city has done on housing and on affordable housing. And Steve, I have to share with you, I was at Mayor Mary Ann Baldwin's kickoff for her reelection last week. She was surrounded by many of the former mayors of Raleigh, standing there on the podium. Well, actually, it was just a chair at a restaurant. She was standing there with other mayors of Raleigh. She acknowledged them. But in her remarks about her tenure as mayor thus far, one mayor she mentioned was Steve Schul of Durham. Because we set the pace for public housing in Durham, and it's something Raleigh looks to. You know, whenever we hear our friends in Raleigh say good things about Durham, I think we should remember that. You were the leader there. And again, once again, showing your cool in taking our biggest-in-the-state housing bond through its passage and setting the stage for a very important policy in our city in the years to come. Steve, I could go on and on about your incredible work. Others have shared all of the amazing things that you've done. So I just wanted to focus on those couple of things in the short time that Carmesha has given us tonight. I'll close, though, with this quote from Ralph Walde. I'll close, though, with this quote from Ralph Waldo Emerson, "An institution is the lengthened shadow of a man." It could be, should be, a person. And Steve, the institution of the city of Durham has your shadow all over it, as well as so many other things that you've done in serving our community, whether it's the school board, the Independent newspaper, and so many other things where your shadow is. But those institutions, and especially our city, have benefited greatly from your work over the years. Steve, thank you for your service. Enjoy your retirement, though you're not the retiring kind of guy. And I look forward to seeing you and Leo as you walk through the neighborhood and as you come over to visit your grandchild. Because as many of you know, my house is right between Steve's and his new grandbaby. So, Steve, thanks again.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you so much, Senator.
Thank you, Senator. We're now being joined by Councilmember Diane Cotati.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you. Thank you for the opportunity to wish Steve well in his retirement from the city council. It was always a joy to work with Steve on council. He's one of the most kind, compassionate, thoughtful, and respectful people I know. He was a wonderful council member and mayor, and he became a good friend. I love sharing our ideas on policy, the world, our families, and good books to read. It was great fun to work with Steve, and I know he fondly remembers my elbow jabs at work sessions when he sat on my right. When Steve first joined council, he gave us the fourth vote needed to pass the first dedicated funding source of a penny for affordable housing. And Steve always has thoughtful, albeit sometimes lengthy, remarks, words to motivate and guide us. And I truly respect his coverage, sorry, excuse me, his courage in putting in place strong public health measures during the pandemic. I know his and others' efforts have helped save lives in Durham. And lastly, I greatly appreciate Steve naming me to the Affordable Housing Bond Advisory Committee, and later as co-chair of the Implementation Committee. He knows I care deeply about affordable housing, as he does. Steve, I wish you great comfort and joy in retirement, and more time to read good books, enjoy your family, and play with your granddaughter. Thank you for your dedication and commitment and long years of service to Durham. All the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
And now, we will hear from Web Gully.
Good evening, Mayor Shul, members of the council. It's good to be with you all. I appreciate City Manager Page and Chief of Staff Wallace for their kind invitation to say a few words. And at this point, much of it's been said, but I'll be brief. I'm happy and honored to join you tonight and say a couple remarks really focused on our community's concerns about affordable housing and transit, speaking much on behalf of a volunteer group, the Coalition here in Durham, the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit. These two issues, safe, affordable shelter and transportation are key ones because, as all of you know, they're the two largest expense items in most Americans' household budget, the two biggest challenges they face. And we know that we must have both of those in Durham if we're to be a community that welcomes everyone and embraces diversity. In a couple of minutes, I cannot begin to speak to all that Steve and this council have done and worked for in the last four years. Can't even begin. But in short, I would say that it's clear that he and the council have taken what was a meaningful commitment to provide affordable housing in Durham, and transformed it into one of the most comprehensive, substantial programs for affordable housing in the United States today. In his role as mayor and on the Board of our Regional Transportation Agency Go Triangle, Steve has worked tirelessly to expand Durham's bus system, while at the same time supporting the creation of a regional rail and bus system that we know the Triangle needs for today's and tomorrow's mobility challenges. He understands very well that Durham cannot meet those challenges if we only think locally and only think about bus. So I know that our group and many others in the community, groups that are too numerous to name, but and the advocates for safe and affordable housing and public transportation across Durham join me tonight in thanking Mayor Shul for all that he's done, and all of your work, and all of your efforts, and all your successes that we have achieved to date. We know that his impact and legacy will be felt for many, many years to come. And Steve, I hope you know by now that even former mayors can stay engaged in the life and future of this wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And now, we will have remarks from Commissioner Chair Brenda Howerton.
Technology? Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening to Mayor Shul, City Council, and community. It is my honor on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners to say to Steve, it's been a pleasure to work with you. It's been a pleasure to fight with you. It's been my honor to get things done. Sometimes you have to fight a little bit. But it's been a pleasure in all of those things that we do together to make life better for the citizens of Durham. And you know, what I do is that I don't prolong things. So I think everything has been said. I think you are going out in such a great way to spend time with your little one, your grandbaby, that you can't get that back. That time passes so fast. When they're little, they grow up, and then they don't have time for you when they get grown. They're too busy doing it with their friends. So I just wish you luck, and lots of fun, and lots of spoiling grandbabies, your granddaughter, and then you can give it back to your mom once you spoil her. So thank you for all your service. Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much, Brenda.
And now, we will hear from Commissioner Wendy Jacobs.
Thank you for giving me the honor and pleasure of joining in the celebration of our great mayor, Steve Shul. Steve, two of the hardest things I have ever done in my life have been the Light Rail Project and dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. And I guess it says a lot when I can say that going through those things with you, you in your role as mayor, and me in my role as Chair of the Board of County Commissioners, that going through those experiences with you was the silver lining of those very tough experiences. In those challenging times, I witnessed your incredible ability to lead, your ability to make hard decisions and tough calls, your brilliant and innovative approach to policymaking, your ability to be a great listener and ask incisive questions, your warmth and compassion and ability to be a friend to so many, your humbleness and lack of ego, and most of all, your absolute fierceness and boldness as a leader, your willingness to fight hard, take fearless action, and always do what you think is right and in the best interests of the people of Durham. One of the greatest challenges of all of our lives has been the COVID-19 pandemic. No one is prepared for this type of a crisis in the lives of the people of our community. And I will never forget that day on March 16th, a Friday afternoon, when you told me that you didn't really care what anybody said. You were going to shut down D-PAC because you could not bear the idea of hundreds of people being packed into that theater and not knowing what could happen, and if hundreds of people could be exposed to this virus, and that we could even lose one life. That is the embodiment of the type of leader that you are. And I could not be prouder that together, we were among the first city and county governments, just about a month later, on April 17th, 2021, one of the first governments in the state and in our country to implement a ordinance requiring face coverings, which I have also no doubt has saved lives. The creation of the Recovery and Renewal Task Force, which helped collectively guide us through the pandemic and brought together community leaders, involved hundreds of residents, and pulled in incredible local talent and expertise, was again, the embodiment of your approach to leadership. Steve, you have served our community for more than 40 years, four decades, in so many roles, and you have literally helped make Durham the progressive beacon of the South that it is today. I am so glad that you will now be able to relish what may be what will be your most important title yet, Grandpa. Congratulations. Thank you so much for everything that you've done for our community.
Thank you, Wendy.
It's possible, oh, Tom Bonfield.
Was that Bill Bell?
Yeah, but gone, my leader.
Party's been crashed. Plans been foiled.
Go ahead, Tom. Go ahead, Tom.
Okay, so it sounds like Tom Bonfield is up next. Take it away, Tom.
Well, thank you, Ms. Wallace, and I assure you that I will comply with your strict guidance of no more than two minutes. Certainly my pleasure and glad to be with everyone this evening, albeit virtual, and be a part of the congratulations for Steve, Mayor Shul, and just an incredible public service career. Steve, I was so glad to spend some time with you last week here on the coast of North Carolina and share some really, some great conversations and great moments, but did want to take this opportunity this evening to be a part of this celebration of your tremendous public service, to say that the time that I was the manager with you were some very challenging times, as we know, and has also been spoken this evening. But really, what I want to say in my brief remarks are how much I appreciate the non-city times that we spent together and the friendships. Sometimes it was sorrowful with the loss of our parents. Many times, it was joyful, and we celebrated accomplishments of our children, and certainly the great gift of granddaughters that we've come to know and love. And just want to say that I appreciate every moment of that friendship, as well as the times that we spent on some very challenging issues during my time as manager. But to say, Steve, thank you. We want to stay in touch. We've promised to stay in touch, and I look forward to many more visits of me back in Durham and you on the coast. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you so much, Tom.
So at this time, we're going to recognize former mayor Bill Bell.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Steve, I'm in Cognito this evening. To be honest with you, I had so many things to do. I couldn't get dressed properly to come downtown, and this cheap iPhone that I got from the city doesn't allow me to turn my camera on. So you just have to remember me for what it was. But yeah, I've heard what so many people said about you, all true, the platitudes can't come enough. For many of you, you might not know, Steve and I go a long way back. When I was a young county commissioner and Steve was a young publisher of the Independent, it started from that point. And some of you may or may not know that when we set out to start the Emergents County City School System, Steve was on the task force that made all of that come to fruition. In fact, they renamed themselves the Emerger Issues Task Force. So I appreciate very much what you've done, what you continue to do. But more important, I appreciate the fact that we've been friends and hope we carried on a long way. What you guys don't know, that Steve and I are going to set up a, as soon as he gets straight and makes sure his granddaughter's doing well, I don't know how long, it'll probably be forever, but whenever that happens, we're going to set up a deli shop, because both of us love pastrami and corned beef. We're just going to try and find the right place and the right time to make that happen. But we'll make that announcement at the appropriate time. But seriously, Steve, you've been a great leader, a great person. I know you're going to be a great, great grandfather. And I want to say to you and all your family, I wish you the very best, and I do appreciate having the opportunity to work with you, and want to continue to do that as life goes on. So good luck, best wishes. Keep on doing the things you're doing to make the city a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And now, we'll have some remarks from Tiffany Elder.
Good evening, Mayor Shul. I remember being on an elevator with you on the way to the University Club for a meeting not long after you were elected as mayor four years ago. And I greeted you, and you responded that you remembered me from years earlier at a visit to a construction project that I finished on Gear Street a few years earlier. And I was shocked at your memory of that, but it left a huge impression on me as a business owner in the city, and it illustrated to me how important people are to you. So I appreciate the opportunity to congratulate you on moving forward into the next phase of your life, and I would like to share a few thank yous for your time in office. First, thank you for all of your hard work on council and as mayor, also for your support of Durham's first participatory budgeting process, and for putting much-needed dollars and decision-making directly into the hands of Durham's residents, for your hard work on Durham's Affordable Housing Bond, because I know that one was not easy, and also for entrusting Diane Cotati and I to lead the charge with the Housing Bond Implementation Committee. We've gotten off to a really good start. We've gathered a lot of feedback, and we're excited about the bond's impact in Durham in the years to come. Thank you for beginning to put the pieces and persons in place toward your vision of a more equitable Durham. We have a long way to go, but starting is the most important first step. And as you move on to new endeavors, I trust that life will allow you to enjoy much more time with family, friends, loved ones, and self in the years to come.
Thank you, Tiffany. Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Mayor, we are just about wrapping up. I do want to recognize Katie Galbraith.
Hello. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Shul, City Council members. Steve, on behalf of Duke Health, I just want to offer my sincere thanks for your really outstanding service to this community. And I particularly want to thank you for your extraordinary leadership over the past 20 months. You know, you have been steadfast in your commitment to equity, in your commitment to safety, and your commitment to public health. You know, Senator Woodard talked about Durham setting the pace around affordable housing. Well, I think Durham set the pace around public health, particularly so early, as Commissioner Jacobs pointed out, so early in the pandemic. Durham was three months ahead of North Carolina in implementing that mask mandate, and I absolutely believe that that helped save lives. And that's the kind of steadfast leadership that you have had. You also had the wisdom to bring together a team of leaders really committed to helping Durham navigate the immediacy of the pandemic, and with a focus on coming out stronger, on coming out more resilient, on coming out more just. These last 20 months- These last 20 months have been the most challenging, I think, for for many of us professionally, personally, for our community, for our state, for our nation, for our globe. This is a global pandemic. And I have to say that serving alongside you and this group of truly amazingly talented and committed leaders is has been a highlight for me of of my entire career. You know, you also, you talked about your, someone mentioned your your boundless energy. What they didn't mention was that you don't take no for an answer. And that's a great thing when it comes to Durham. And and so under your leadership, that 100-day Recovery and Renewal Task Force completed 365 days of service to this community. And through it all, I personally learned so much. I think we all learned so much. And I was so impressed by your really humble leadership, your compassion, your caring, the way you leaned in and continue to lean in and listen and learn. And and again, your uncanny ability to to really get things done, to get people to say, yes, we can. Durham is a better place because of you. And so I thank you for your service and I congratulate you on your retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you so much.
And now we'll hear from Tobias Rose.
Hello, hello, everyone, and thank you for inviting me. And thank you for for letting me do this. I guess two minutes is not a whole lot of time. I'm trying to keep this very, very, very quick. I know, City Council, you all have a lot of business to handle. But Mayor Shul, there are just so many, you know, little examples of of your leadership that I don't think anyone will ever have any perspective on that just amazed me, and I want to say thank you for that. You know, he had, he came to us, came over to the studio. We're right across the street and asked me to to serve on the Affordable Housing Advisory Group. And with that, we gave City Council a lot of things that we felt like should be done before the bond went out to the public. And Steve made sure that that stuff was was taken seriously. And so the interesting thing about that was when we started, we had this motley crew of just incredible community leaders. Some of them I didn't even know. And at the end, I remember looking around the room and I said, oh, man, I get it. I see what he was doing now. I see why he put this particular group together. And that kind of insight is something that takes wisdom, it takes experience. It it takes something inside of you. It's not something that you can just manufacture. So I want to say, you know, number one, thank you for that because with that, we passed the largest housing bond in North Carolina's history. And additionally, just hopefully this retirement doesn't mean that I personally won't have access to you. I'm going to be selfish, being able to pick up the phone and call you and just get what I like to call an O V's perspective on things is important. You know, a lot of us in the business community, we sometimes get pulled into things that that you guys do on a regular basis in City Council and just in saving Durham and making Durham a better place. And these things are incredibly fulfilling, but sometimes we need advice from people like you. So thank you so much for your leadership. Thank you for everything you've done for Durham. Thank you for teaching me how to say sesquicentio because that took some doing. And thank you for having our team, you know, work on that that logo for the 150th. So thank you so, so much for everything you've done. And again, I could keep going, but I know I only have two minutes. And, Commissioner, thank you so much for having me get on this. I think I'm going to go ahead and pass the mic.
All right, so we're passing the mic to Pilar Rocha Goldberg.
Thank you, Commissioner, for this opportunity. Buenas noches a todos. Good evening, everybody. Mayor Shul, thank you. First of all, I want to thank you because since you became a city council member, you came to Ascentespano to talk to me, to learn about the community and to see what was needed and how you could help. You have been always open to listen and to talk about concerns that the community has and always to try to find solutions. And that was really clear when the pandemic started. Your leadership skills and your ability to bring people together really was a gift and essential to the community need, especially minorities in these difficult times. I still remember that day that we went to give masks to the street vendors on Club Bolivar. That's you. That's you, Steve. We will miss you, but I'm sure we will continue connected. Enjoy your retirement and un abrazo y gracias por todo. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, Pilar.
And now we have Jeff Durham joining us.
Good evening, everyone. Man, it is, it's been a pleasure to sit in for the last hour plus seeing so many familiar faces that I haven't had a chance to chat to in a while. And it it's great certainly to be able to join you all this evening to celebrate the great work of our our mayor, Steve Shul. I'm so pleased to join you all this evening and get a chance to just pay some respects and appreciation for everything that Mayor Shul has done on behalf of our community. Steve, you've been a leading voice in so many different areas through Durham's revitalization and through so many tough conversations that we've heard about this evening already around transit and housing affordability, public safety, equity, and community health. Sir, you have indeed ushered us through in our community through some unprecedented times, and I am so grateful for that leadership. On a personal level, I really have always appreciated your guiding hand in many of our off hours, kind of personal conversation based conversations dating back to to my arrival nearly eight years ago, as crazy as that sounds. But I've always been appreciative of your of your willingness to to talk and open up ideas and really inform and educate. And I certainly continue to be thankful for that. So with that, thank you for your compassionate leadership. We've heard the word compassion over and over again. But thank you for your compassionate leadership and congratulations on a well-earned retirement. And go get after being a grandpa.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, and from Jeff, we'll turn it over to Nicole Thompson. Who's muted?
Yeah. Okay, sorry about that. I'm just learning how to use Zoom, apparently. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Shul, I've written my comments down so I make sure to stay under the two minutes. I've heard that you don't want to make Ms. Wallace angry, so I'm going to do my best. Mayor Shul, thank you for your long and steadfast commitment and service to Durham and most especially downtown Durham. I don't think anyone would disagree when I say there is no doubt of your love and dedication to making Durham a wonderful place to live, work, and play for all. That dedication spreads wide and far and has been so obvious throughout your public service career in your tireless push to ensure there are economic opportunities through housing, transportation, and jobs for anyone who calls Durham home. But your absolute love for the people of Durham is what will be remembered by most and certainly by me. It was this love that was front and center as you led Durham through the last 20 months of COVID. Your commitment to do all in your power to keep Durham safe and ensure masks and gloves and hand sanitizers were available, testing sites were available, and once the vaccines were available, pushing to ensure there were opportunities for anyone to have access to these vaccines. I saw you struggle with shutdowns and face masks and all other COVID precautions. I even pushed you on some of these issues. However, never did I think you didn't care and always I knew how much you struggled to do what was right for Durham. So I am so happy that I have had the opportunity to work with you over the last four and a half years to make downtown a place that is open and welcoming to all and Durham such a great place to call home. I hope that while you'll be retiring, your presence and input in downtown Durham's growth will continue. When you're running through downtown and you see me give a wave, I won't stop you. I'll let you continue to run. And maybe one of these days I'll run with you and we can run through Durham together and I can tell you what's going on. But again, thank you for all you have done, for your service and your strong love for the bull city. Durham is certainly a better place because of you.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you so much.
Nicole, and now we hear from Cecilia Barra.
Perfect pronunciation. So good night to everybody. I'm here to speak not about the grandkid of Steve, but actually about the great grandparents of Steve, whose name was Elias Ambluma, who flew from Lithuania because of the totalitarian system of Russia back in 1889. And you might wonder how come I know about the great grandparents of Steve. And that is because back in 2017, it was December, it was a cold night. We hosted an event with Durham Cam and the Latino Congress in El Buen Pastor in East Durham on Liberty Street. And the room was completely packed. We had the media, we had our leaders, we had our neighbors. And Steve Shul was there and there was one empty chair and that was the chair of the Latino person who was going to speak. That was Celine from El Salvador, one of our several neighbors who worked on construction in Durham. He was just too afraid to come and to speak on behalf of the Latino community. But the person who stood up and spoke in Spanish was Steve himself in a perfect Spanish. And let me repeat what he said back in 2017. He said, "En Durham no construimos muros. We don't build walls. Queremos que vivas libre de miedo. We don't want you to live here in our city with being afraid. Te damos la bienvenida. You are welcome." And then he said, "Con nuestros brazos abiertos y nuestro corazón abierto." Those were the words of our mayor in his first year. And I was lucky enough and honored to serve also in the Housing Bond Committee. And when we had our discussions with Tobias and we and all of you, we spoke not only about the money, the resources, the physical, the hardware, the investment to be done, but also about the soul and the relations of trust and the kind of community that we want to build. So Steve, you did a lot for the Latino community as well, not only on resources and the hardware, but in the soul, en el corazón, y estamos agradecidos. Gracias amigo, gracias alcalde.
Gracias, Cecilia.
And I will have a few brief remarks from Henry McCoy.
Good evening, everybody. Hello, Mayor Shul. It's such a pleasure to get a chance to to speak at this moment. And, you know, you and I, what a lot of people don't know is that we, you and I connect via phone or meeting. The, you know, the first thing we talk about is not usually, you know, kind of the business of hand. We usually compare our running injuries and what's going on with us at that time. Maybe we can keep on some of those as, you know, in the future. You know, I I've had the opportunity to work very closely with you, have some great conversations with you, and I certainly appreciate those. And, you know, I had the honor of, you know, being a part of the Affordable Housing, you know, valuable board that you put together. And that was certainly a great experience. But what I I just want to talk about and acknowledge very quickly is something else. And so in October of 2018, Deborah Giles had asked me to give a keynote speech at the Minority Enterprise Development Week luncheon at the Millenia Hotel. And and, you know, it was a one of those situations where I had to decide whether I, you know, it was a celebratory situation. So do I talk about kind of the great things going on or do I kind of hold a mirror up to Durham around what's what was going on with equity and business as I was charged with this question of, you know, what is the state of of, you know, minority entrepreneurship in Durham? And, you know, what can we do about it? And so, as you know, I I kind of took the latter. I held up a mirror and talked about Durham and where we had been and where we are and where we might go. And and from that, you know, a lot of the, I I think the discussions that we've had over the last several years have been, you know, very substantial in terms of this idea of making Durham this kind of, you know, leader of equity. And I want to give you a lot of credit for, I remember after that you came up to me and you expressed your gratitude for the content and and also told me that you wanted me to share the speech with you. You sent me the email follow up. You said, hey, can you send that speech to me? What you didn't know at the time, the speech didn't have a title. I had to go back and cross my Ts and dot my Is and now it would become P. And that became the speech that is now known as the Death of Durham. That's shared with the city council, you shared it with the city staff, with the county and those folks. And I and I remember not long after that, you actually, we were about to go to Bloomberg to do some work with Bloomberg Foundation. And you changed the, or you helped to push this idea of changing the focus of that work around equitable economic development. And I think that made a tremendous amount of difference. And so I just want to acknowledge you here publicly on your role in making, you know, equitable economic development a centerpiece of what Durham is. And I think you, that will be one of your lasting contributions to this work. So thank you, Steve. I I wish you the best in retirement. And, you know, I look forward to, you know, catching you on the trail.
Thank you so much, Henry. I'll see you out there. Thank you.
And now we're going to hear from Vanice Sanders.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm sorry. I was tending to my granddaughter. I would like to thank you for your services. I have been on the Housing Implementation Board for a few months, and I've listened to all of the great things that you have done here in Durham. Sorry to have worked with you for such a short time. I wish you would still have been the mayor of Durham, but unfortunately you have other adventures that you would like to venture out to. So once again, I would thank you for the short time that I've known you. And thank you for your services.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vanice.
And now we'll hear from John Parker.
Well, it's been quite a parade that we've had of folks speaking here. I feel very honored to be a part of a part of this celebration. I'm a Realtor in Durham, third generation resident. My kids are fourth, my grandkids are fifth generation residents. And I'm proud to say that of everybody here, I'm the first person that ever voted for Stevie Shul. I voted for him in 1972 to be the as-do president at Duke. Wibb remembers it. Eddie Davis remembers it. But it's been quite a ride knowing knowing you, Stevie, both personally and professionally. I really got to know Stevie in 1975. We were both taking skydiving lessons at the Franklin County Airport. And we spent the day together, learning how to jump, learning how to steer a parachute, and learning how to land. And I think that as I was thinking about this is that, Stevie, that kind of embodies you. You know, you, and I hope everyone in the council can take that ability and the risk to jump. And you did that with the Affordable Housing Bond. I'm proud to serve on the Affordable Housing Implementation Committee now. And, you know, it it's been a wild, great ride. And the best I can say is that in Durham, I I kind of hope as a Realtor that if anybody's thinking about moving to Durham, I'm going to ask them to watch this program to see all the incredible people that and the resources that we have here in Durham. And I feel honored to have worked with many of you over the years on different nonprofit organizations. But let's let's just say congratulations to Stevie. Our diversity is our strength here in Durham. And Stevie, I think this is a landing for you, not the landing.
Thank you, John. Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Mayor, we have one more person in the virtual Zoom room who you've been engaging with quite a bit the last couple of months. And so at this time, I'll turn it over to the next speaker who needs no introduction from me.
Thank you so much. Protocol being established, I say good evening. It is truly an honor to be here to speak to you this evening about this great leader. I'm truly honored to be amongst the panelists. I want to extend a huge thank you to Manager Page and Chief Staff Wallace for giving me this opportunity to express gratitude. Mayor Shul, I want to thank you so much for all that you've done for Durham. But personally, I like to just really tell you about my deep appreciation for the wise council and unwavering support that you provided to me. And most importantly, your great sacrifice of time and energy. I remember our very first conversation that we had because it related to DPAC, as mentioned earlier. It was quite clear that you cared about Durham as the conversation turned away from DPAC to how I was doing. Was there anything I needed? And were we prepared for what was to come with the pandemic? So on behalf of the men and women of the Durham County Department of Public Health, we thank you for supporting us. We truly thank you. We've kept our community safe through hard work and even harder decisions. We work together as one team, as mentioned about the Blue Ribbon Task Force that you created. And while many of my health director colleagues throughout the state really struggle with their elected officials, it gives me great it gives me great pleasure to let them know that here in Durham, I have a great working relationship with my elected officials because you guys are awesome. And as I often say, Durham leads the way. I thank you so much for challenging me to be a better version of myself. I'm really appreciative of how you always ask about my family, but more importantly, how you always encourage me to take a day off, which I rarely do because COVID-19 never takes a day off. Your legacy is set, and I've learned a whole lot about you and leadership by just watching you do what you do because you're truly a smooth operator. So I wish you all the best as you settle into being a private citizen, if that is a thing for you. And I wish you well. You have a beautiful family, beautiful granddaughter, and you deserve all the time in the world to be with me. So again, thank you so much for all you do, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Rod. Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would be remiss if I did not allow the love of your life to take some time to share with us publicly the G version, Leo.
May I take my mask off? So, Steve, your whole family, including Abe and Josephine, who was looking in from the outside, and her mama Lauren Lee, and Josephine won't be on the outside looking in for very long, I don't think. And Ben and Carrie, who I don't know if you saw behind their masks. And Solly sends his good wishes from Miami. He couldn't be here. We all want to join the city of Durham in thanking you and congratulating you on the great work you've done as our mayor. Because we're the ones who know just how hard you've worked through your tenure. And believe me, it's been hard. We're the ones who've seen you answer emails morning, noon, at midnight, and after midnight, and sometimes way too long after midnight. We've seen you go to your first meeting at 6:30 in the morning and come home at nine at night before the pandemic, dead tired. And then when the pandemic started, we've watched you for a full year and a half, chair city council meetings from a little teeny-tiny chair in your office, a very uncomfortable chair, for a year and a half. And then we've watched you through that year and a half, day after day, Zoom meeting after Zoom meeting after Zoom meeting after Zoom meeting into the weekend and then working late at night. So we know that you never expected to be a mayor in a time of emergency. We know that that's not what you wanted. We know you never dreamed of being a mayor during a global pandemic. And we know that you always wanted to be, talk to your council members, your colleagues, the city staff, the community in person. That's always been your favorite part of the job. And the pandemic took that away. But you rose to the challenge. And we've seen you do the job 24/7, literally, on many days with enthusiasm and even good humor. So we know more than anyone just how hard you've worked to make this city that you love a city where everyone can truly thrive. And we know there's still more work to do. We know that although you're stepping down as mayor, your love for Durham is as strong as ever, and we are lucky to have you. So tonight, we, your family, want to thank you, along with everyone else, for all you've done for Durham and for all of us. We're proud of you, we're grateful for your work, and we love you.
Thank you, Leo.
Mr. Mayor, the floor is all yours.
Thank you, Carminsha.
This is our version of a COVID-friendly party, buddy.
Wow. Ms. Wallace, thank you. Manager Page, thank you so much. That was not what I expected tonight. We do have three public hearings. I am blown away by what I heard. And I just, I can't even express my gratitude. Thank you all so much, all of you all who are here and everyone on Zoom. And it was amazing. Doing this work is just, it's the honor of a lifetime. Those of us who've been able to do this know that. It's really the honor of a lifetime. And I, you know, that's a cliche, but it's true. And I really, I have some remarks mainly for my colleagues and the future members of the council and future mayor, but for this community too. At our next meeting, December 6th, Elaine O'Neill will be sworn in as the 38th mayor of Durham. And she's going to do a wonderful job as our mayor. And as I have let her know, and will say again, I will help her in any way that I can. You know, I got to sit for six years next to Bill. Patrick Baker sat between us. And it is true that we often ask Patrick, had he brought us a pastrami sandwich? But I got to sit and learn from Bill. Elaine has not been able to do that. She's been doing other amazing work. But we're going to have to help her in every way we can. And I know our amazing staff is going to do everything that they can to make her successful. And she will be successful. So Mayor-elect O'Neill, one more time, you have my complete and total support and confidence. Please call on me whenever, whenever you need. I want to appreciate my family for being here. Carrie and Ben, thank you. Abe, Lauren Lee, and little Josephine, and of course, Leo. Thank you so much for being, I can't, I'm so happy that you're here tonight. I want to say to my beloved colleagues, what an amazing group of public servants that you are. We certainly have our differences over policy, for sure. But together, I really feel like we have united to move this city forward on so many fronts. And we didn't let our debates over policy devolve into personal attacks or enmity or acrimony. And I believe in that we really have set a good example for our community for how our politics ought to be conducted as friends and close colleagues with generosity and kindness. And I have always felt that from you all, and I'm so, so grateful for it. I still believe the, what I said on the day that I was sworn in as mayor, that we, the people of Durham, envision a prosperous, innovative, green, and welcoming city that thrives on diversity and difference, a city that puts racial and economic justice at the top of our civic agenda, that defends the vulnerable among us, that cherishes robust, respectful debate on difficult questions, that embraces nonviolence, that embodies the belief that all residents must have an opportunity to share in our newfound prosperity, a city that serves as a progressive beacon for the South and the nation. It's our job, not the council, not even mostly the council, all of us in this city, to work to make that vision real. And we know we're far from the realization of that vision. The terrible gun violence that we have experienced just this week tells us that. The rising cost of housing is an existential threat to our dream of being a city for all. The pandemic and the righteous uprising in the wake of the murder of George Floyd have taught us yet again that we are a nation and a city beset by racial injustice. And yet we do the work, and together we rise. You've heard many people tonight talk about the Affordable Housing Bond. I want to remind everyone that 76% of the voters in our city supported that bond. And the work that we will be doing and the work that we are doing now will provide stable, affordable housing over the next five years for 15,000 residents of Durham. 15,000 residents of Durham. I won't go into the details of that tonight, but you all know that this work is so critically important, that we are fighting back against the forces of gentrification. We can't stop them, but we can fight back, and we can do a lot to change the lives of so many people. I was going to talk a lot about the housing, but some of the other people did. I don't think I need to. So what I do want to say about, what I do want to mention in terms of housing that really wasn't highlighted tonight, we talked a lot about the Affordable Housing and our work with Durham Housing Authority and our creation of new and affordable units and the preservation of existing affordable units and making them permanently affordable for long periods of time. I do want to talk about the new urgency that I think that we have around homelessness that the pandemic has created for us. I feel this new urgency, and I know that our community does too. And I just want to say that I have felt something very different in our work around homelessness as well in these last months, a new urgency in that work. The city and the county of jointly funding our expanded street teams to reach out to our unsheltered residents and get them into permanent housing. Entry Point Durham is providing coordinated entry into our system of homeless services in a much more effective way than I've ever seen before. The city's funding outreach to landlords to engage them and accepting Section 8 vouchers and housing formerly homeless individuals. Significantly expanded our rapid rehousing work through our nonprofit partners. And in short, for the first time, I really feel like, as a close observer of this system, that we seem to have a system that is working to serve our homeless residents. We've got a long way to go, but I'm really proud of that. And I'm so proud of our staff for making that happen. We have so much more to be proud of, colleagues. And I thought that Councilmember Freeland did a wonderful job of talking about that. And he bragged on something I'm going to brag on. We have made three hires. We have three people to hire, and this group of people made three hires. Dudes, we crushed it. We crushed it. We have hired a new city manager, a new city attorney, and a new city clerk. And I will say that all of them, Wanda, Madam Manager, Kim, Madam Attorney, Diana, Madam Clerk, are amazing leaders. We are so lucky to have you. I am so confident. And I can tell you that when I was talking to Mayor-elect O'Neill this morning, I mean, this afternoon, we had a great meeting today, how much I told her, you're cool, you're good. Because we have the people that will support you and give you everything you need. And I just want to thank you all for your wonderful leadership. You know, in a way, that's the most important decision we make, colleagues. And so, hey, we get an A for those decisions. I do want to talk about a couple of our initiatives that are really important. And speaking of our city manager, Wanda Page, let me say a word about one of her initiatives, our new community safety department. Under her guidance and leadership, and with the unanimous support of the council, we have created this community safety department, which gives us an opportunity, I believe, to lead the nation in creating the right response for residents when they call 911. Of the 300,000 calls we get to 911 every year, the vast majority are unrelated to gun violence. And when I have ridden with our police officers on Saturday nights, I see that as well. I've been on calls with officers to help a man who has fallen down drunk in the street. I've been on calls with an officer to assist a person having a mental health crisis in a group home, to assist with a three-year-old boy who has wandered out into the street unattended. When gunshots are fired, police officers must respond. But right now, we're putting too much on the shoulders of our police officers. We need them freed up to do what they are trained to do, what we need them to do, and that is to effectively fight gun violence. For many other calls from members of our communities who are in crisis, a different response is the best response. Sometimes a mental health clinician, sometimes peer support, sometimes a multi-disciplinary team, and sometimes a co-response with police. In consultation with other cities doing this work, we're now embarking on pilots to figure out the best kind of triage at the 911 call center and the most effective mobile response. Colleagues, it's going to be critical that this department is well-resourced if we are going to do the work that we know we need to do. And I know you all will be well-guided by the advice of Manager Page and her staff in that regard. I do believe that if we can resource this department well, that we will be leading the nation in finding the right responses to 911 calls, and we will keep our city safer. I do want to thank you all, colleagues, for your amazing work during this pandemic. I think, when I think about all the things we've done together, there's one that really stands out to me. And that is that we are providing 45 community health workers and non-community-based organizations over a five-month period to try to achieve vaccine equity in Durham. When we started this, we were, our vaccine rate was less than, we had fewer than 70% of our residents had at least one shot in their arms, our residents 12 and above. We're now at 91% of our residents who have at least one shot in the arm. And almost all of this gain has been achieved by vaccinating members of our Black and Brown communities. Our vaccine equity work is working, and I'm so grateful for your support of that. There's so much more. We funded the Bill City United Violence Interrupters to expand to four new neighborhoods. We've expanded bus service, significantly electrified our fleet, and made bus service fare-free for all residents. What a great achievement. We funded legal aid attorneys to represent tenants in eviction court. We funded youth internships this summer for 400 young people, by far the most ever. And thank you, Manager Page, for your leadership on that. We have solarized city buildings on the verge of entering the Green Source Advantage Program, which allows us to run city government. Most of city government operations with the renewable energy and to meet our very ambitious carbon and renewable energy targets. We greatly strengthened the rules to protect our tree canopy. We've created the Mayor's Commission on Women, the Workers' Rights Commission, and the Racial Equity Task Force, conceived of by Mayor Pro Tem Johnson and chaired so ably by Mayor-elect O'Neill. Our participatory budgeting process is a model for the nation. We're pushing forward with our Guaranteed Income Pilot for residents returning from incarceration. Through the Dear program, we have led the restoration of driver's licenses for thousands of our residents and offered free expulsion services to hundreds and hundreds of our Durham neighbors. We've diversified the membership of our boards and commissions, making them representative of our city. We've established a $6 million per year fund for green and equitable infrastructure in neighborhoods which have experienced historic disinvestment. This year, our budget says loud and clear to the world that everyone is welcome in Durham. Whatever your race or language or country of origin, we want you here in Durham. If you are a refugee fleeing foreign despotism, we want you here. Whatever your documentation status, we want you here, and we embrace you. Cecilia Barja spoke of the words that I said a few years ago, and let me say something similar tonight. Queremos que estés a salvo aquí. Queremos que vivas libre del miedo. Te damos la bienvenida a Durham con los brazos abiertos y corazones abiertos. We welcome you to Durham with open arms and an open heart. For the first time, we're funding critical services for the members of our Latinx community. We built a strong language access program for city government. We funded an immigration and refugee coordinator with the county. We funded a position at El Centro Hispano. And we've established an immigrant legal defense fund for Durham residents facing deportation. There's a lot of other things. If you haven't been to Rock Creek Park lately, go there. This renovation is almost complete, giving us a wonderful event space in our park for the first time. Hoover Road Park will be ready in the spring. Thank you, Bo and Company. Long Hall, a fabulous soccer complex we've needed for so long. And when the ribbon cutting occurs, I hope I will get an invitation to watch a Durham kid kick the first ball into one of those nets. This year, we're spending $16 million on sidewalks, $6 million on bicycle infrastructure, $5.7 million to bring high-speed broadband into the apartments at every Durham Housing Authority community where children are living. And we're spending, Councilmember Middleton, $2.4 million to work down our list of unpaved roads in Durham. And we will not stop, I know you will not stop, colleagues, until that list is down to zero. So much of the work I've described above is racial equity work of the highest order, and it makes me very proud, and I know it makes you proud too. And yet, there are a lot of challenges ahead. First, I want to challenge the council to make three of our upcoming capital projects not just good, but fabulous. Please, colleagues, don't skimp on the Belt Line Trail. It can be an incredible recreation resource for Durham with public art, affordable housing along its borders, and so much more. Likewise, the constructed wetland on Trinity Avenue is vital for treatment of the water that pours into Ellerby Creek from 400 acres downtown, but please make it more. Make it a wonderful community amenity for walking and learning and enjoying nature. And finally, I can't wait to see, and Councilmember Freeland mentioned this already, what a spectacular park we can develop at Wheels. What an amazing opportunity that is. So we've done a lot well. We've done some exciting new, we've got some exciting new opportunities ahead of us. And there's a lot we haven't done so well, and I want to talk about that for a minute. Last week was a terrible week for gun violence in Durham again. And while we know this is a national phenomenon driven by the pandemic, that is cold comfort. Every bullet rips a hole in a Every bullet rips a hole in a family, in a neighborhood, and in our entire community. And we cannot rest until this gun violence has ended. I'm not going to give prescriptions tonight for how to fight gun violence, although I have spoken about this prescription many, many times. I know that our incoming mayor has her own great ideas about this and will be a wonderful leader in this way. And I know that all of my council colleagues are ready to pitch in with their ideas. We have to do better. I know that we can, and I know that we will. We also have to do better by our small businesses owned by women and people of color. During the pandemic, we showed that we know how to help these businesses, and we supported 250 of them with crucial funding. And now we have to extend that work. We have to make our Built to Last program work to raise the equity capital necessary for these businesses to succeed. The pandemic showed us the way to do this, but it also interrupted our momentum, and we have to get it back. We've got to do better by our individual artists and our arts institutions. Before the pandemic, we were poised to include significant funds in our budget to support the artists who make Durham the wonderful place to live that we know. And they're now being priced out of our city. We need to support the new cultural master plan and once more put artists and arts institutions back in our budget. And finally, I want to talk about one area where I think that we, as a city and a region, are truly failing to meet the challenge of our times. We are doing a great job expanding our local bus system and making it free to riders, and we have plans for much more. But since the light rail went down, we do not have the absolutely critical regional transit plan that we need. Two-thirds of the good jobs in our region in the next 20 years will be in Wake County, and it's crucial that our Durham residents can get to these jobs. There are plenty of naysayers, and there are plenty of people who want all of our funds devoted to the local bus system. What I can tell you with absolute certainty is that we need both a great local bus system and a great regional transit. Anybody who tells you we need to pick between the two of these is just dead wrong. If we don't have the financial resources to do both within the current transit sales tax funding, then by gosh, we need to figure out another source of funding. That's the kind of bold visionary planning we do for our water system. It's the kind of planning, that bold visionary planning that you all and we have done together for our affordable housing work. We've got to demand the same level of visionary planning, including raising the revenue that's necessary if we're serious about fighting climate change, traffic gridlock, and getting our residents to good jobs. Colleagues, please don't let anybody tell you that we can't do this. We can do this. Friends, it is not lost on any of us that next week, two weeks, three weeks from now, when Mayor O'Neill is sworn in, it will mark a special moment in the history of our community. She will sit on the dais as our first African-American woman mayor after 152 years of Durham history, way too long. What's more, she will be sitting where I am sitting now, between two incredible, incredible African-American women hired by this council, our city attorney and our city manager hired to lead this city. She will join the Black women who chair the county commission and the school board. She will join the Black women who are our district attorney, our new police chief, our interim county manager, our chief district court judge, Councilmember Freeman, and Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. I am so glad that I will be there to experience this historic swearing-in in a moment way too long in coming, but a moment when justice will be done. There is no one who can carry that mantle of justice, Madam Mayor-elect O'Neill, better than you can. You know, racial justice really is at the top of Durham's civic agenda. We are a city that demands justice and works every day to make it real. But what I don't see enough of in our civic dialogue is the impulse towards mercy. While we have a broad political consensus in Durham, we have developed an unforgiving, often merciless, political culture. Policy disagreements are turned into personal attacks. Social media is filled with hateful criticism of local elected officials or opposing activists. This is so destructive of the community we want to be. It drives people away from public service and away from democratic participation. We desperately need a kinder, more generous political culture in Durham, a culture which tempers justice with mercy. It's up to those of us in elected office to model that behavior, to generously offer the tender mercies that we ourselves hope to receive from others. I know our community can do better in this way, and we have to. And I thank so many of you, colleagues, all of you, colleagues, for modeling that. It's so important. There are way too many people for me to thank, so I'm only going to thank two of them. First is my strong right arm, my rock and my rock star, the amazing Amber Wade. Amber, thank you from the bottom of my heart for your wisdom, for your creativity, your persistence, and all of your hard work. Mayor O'Neill is going to be so lucky to have you at her side, and I am so grateful for you. And to my beloved, Ms. Carmes, she so rightly said, Leo, who has always encouraged whatever crazy path I wanted to walk down. Babe, we have been talking a lot lately at the council about Durham's new poet laureate, and I want to say that you are the poet laureate of my heart. I love you so much, and we're going to have a lot of fun yet together with Abe and Lauren Lee's daughter, Josephine, our granddaughter, and I'm looking forward to every minute of it. So speaking of poems, I want to end with one. I know you all really want me to sing like I used to do at my state-of-the-city speeches, but I'm not going to do that tonight. I'm sorry, I can't accommodate you. Instead, I'm going to read the final lines of a wonderful poem, Alfred Lord Tennyson's Ulysses, written in 1833. You all know the story. It's the story of the Odyssey. Odysseus, or Ulysses, has come home from the Trojan War to his wife and son in Greece after wandering all over the Mediterranean, encountering all kinds of adventures and danger. And now, though, in Tennyson's retelling of the story, Ulysses has grown old, and he has decided to set out again with his comrade in arms on another great adventure. So here, then, are the final lines of the poem as Ulysses speaks to his close companions. There lies the port, the vessel puffs her sail. There gloom the dark broad seas. My mariners, souls that have toiled and wrought and fought with me, that ever with a frolic welcome, took the thunder and the sunshine, and opposed free hearts, free foreheads. You and I are old. Old age hath yet his honor and his toil. Death closes all, but something ere the end, some work of noble note may yet be done, not unbecoming men that strove with gods. The lights begin to twinkle from the rocks, the long day wanes. The slow moon climbs, the deep moans round with many voices. Come, my friends, tis not too late to seek a newer world. Push off, and sitting well in order smite the sounding furrows. For my purpose holds to sail beyond the sunset and the baths of all the western stars until I die. It may be that the gulf will wash us down, and maybe we shall touch the happy isles and see the great Achilles whom we knew. Though much is taken, much abides, and though we are not now that strength which in old days moved earth and heaven, that which we are, we are. One equal temper of heroic hearts, made weak by time and fate, but strong in will, to strive, to seek, to find, and not to yield. Dear friends, let's make the city we love a city for all.
It's 9 o'clock for our closed captioners to be able to rest, and we will be back in five minutes. It's now 8:57. I believe we will be back at 9:02. Thank you.
So now residents that were in a 40 or 50-year-old building now are in brand-new renovated Village Street Apartments, and we're very excited about that. But it's also an important point to make that we have 447 units in that downtown area. And the one thing that has been a commitment by the Housing Authority is that none of those units will move outside of the downtown area. They will remain in the downtown area. Some of them will move to other sites like Village Street. The county is building a parking deck now that soon will have housing surrounding it that's directly across the street from the DHA office. But we're going to put some DHA units in that building as well. So it's something that is important because that becomes part of the solution to help diversify where our residents are so that they're not just in these pockets of poverty, but they get to be in healthier communities, both socially and economically.
My name is Dewayne McIntyre, and I'm a dispatcher at the Durham Emergency Communication Center. The best thing about being a dispatcher at the Durham Emergency Communication Center is truly being able to make a difference. Sometimes you don't realize how much of a difference you're making. However, being able to hear feedback from when people call to say thank you, that you may have saved their relative lives, or was able to calm them down, really makes it worthwhile being a dispatcher. One day, I received a call from a man. He was trapped inside of his home. There was a lot of smoke. He was really struggling to be able to see and get out. He was able to tell me where he was inside of his home. I was able to relay that information to the firefighters, and they were able to get him out safely. My job is satisfying because at times I do go home tired, but I don't go home ever feeling like I didn't help anyone that day. There's always someone that's calling in that's in distress, that just may need someone they talk to, or just may need some type of emergency assistance. But every day, I go home fulfilled with the knowledge that I've helped someone that day.
Good evening. We are back in session. Wow, that was unexpected fun for me. Thank you so much. Goodness gracious. Okay, we will now move to priority items by the city manager.
Good afternoon, Miss Evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the Durham City Council. I do have one priority item for you this evening. Agenda item number 19, zoning map change, Rose Walk 2. Attachment number one was updated. Page two, item three, a paragraph was added. Page three, item D, point one, revisions were made to the paragraph. Page five, item six, a paragraph was added. Page five, item two, remove proffer H. And finally, page eight, item J, applicant contact was changed. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you very much, Madam Manager. Madam Attorney, any priority items tonight?
Good evening, Mayor Schul, Madam Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, and the members of the City Council. The city attorney's office has no priority items this evening.
Thank you very much, Madam Attorney. Madam Clerk, any priority items tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council members. The city clerk's office has one item. We would like to request that Agenda item number two, the Durham Cultural Advisory Board appointment, be returned to the administration due to the applicant, Connor Nielsen, moving outside of Durham, making him no longer eligible to serve.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I don't believe we need to vote on that. I think we can just refer it back. Thank you so much. All right, colleagues, we'll now move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items previously worked on by the council at a work session. These items can be approved by a single vote of the council. An item can be removed from the consent agenda by a member of the public or by a member of the council. If an item is removed, it is held until the end of the meeting for consideration. So the consent agenda, item one, approval of City Council minutes. Item two, Durham Cultural Advisory Board appointment, which has been referred back to the administration. Item three, Durham Historic Preservation Commission mayorial appointment. Item four, Durham Workers' Rights Commission appointments. Items five, Mayor Hispanic-Latino Committee appointments. Item seven, Durham Open Space and Trails Commission mayorial appointment. Item eight, FY 2022-23 Budget Development Schedule. Item nine, Discussion of the Tennis Bill of Rights. That item has been pulled by Ms. Wagstaff and will be held for discussion till the end of the meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do believe that Ms. Wagstaff has withdrawn that hold. I explained to her that the discussion was from Thursday.
Okay.
So I'll just check in and verify.
She was, is that correct, Ms. Wagstaff? Yes, ma'am. Thank you. It will be back in front of the council in the not-too-distant future. Thank you. Item 10, conveyance of 2312 Crane Street, 706 North Elizabeth Street, 704 Eva Street, 1012 Girley Street, and 701 Mallard Drive for the purposes of affordable housing development. Item 11, installment purchase contract Series 2021, Fleet. Item 12, contract with HR&amp;A Advisors, Inc. for consulting services regarding the disposition to redevelopment of 505 West Chapel Hill Street. Item 13, lease and license agreement with the New Singular Wireless PCS LLC at 1701 Coal Mill Road. Item 14, municipal separate stormwater system, MS4 inspections, SD 2021-06. Item 15, stormwater infrastructure repairs, SD 2021-05. And you have now heard the consent agenda, and I will accept a motion for its approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
I believe that was Councilmember Middleton that moved to approve.
It was. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Was there a second? Was there a second? Councilmember Freeman, seconds. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. And colleagues, remember that you now have the clickers back, first time in a long, long time. Madam Clerk, please close the vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, we'll now move to the general business agenda public hearings. And let me just say for those people who are here either virtually or in person for the public hearings, thank you for your patience. I wasn't expecting that. Amazing bit of, yeah, enjoyment for me, but I really am appreciative of your all's patience. Thank you. All right, we will now move to the first public hearing item, which is the United Unified Development Ordinance text amendment, updates for applications and permits. And we will first hear the report from staff.
Thank you very much, Mayor Schul. Michael Stock with the Planning Department. Before I begin, staff would like to note that the required notifications for the Planning Department public hearing items before you tonight have been performed and are on file for review. And of course, Mr. Mayor, we would be remiss to not present to you a text amendment. It is not an omnibus bill, omnibus amendment that you so enjoy, but it is pretty close to one. So for your final public hearing for text amendments, I hope you enjoy this as much you enjoy the other omnibus text amendments that you've presided over.
Mr. Stock, I do enjoy text amendments, and even though this is not the full Monty, I still consider this another day of Mike Stock.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you. So Text Amendment TC 2104 proposes a set of amendments to establish within the Unified Development Ordinance the official application procedures for street renaming, street closings, and annexation requests that are processed by the Planning Department, relocate and update the statutory development agreements, application procedures, and update certain zoning map change procedures. The complete discussion of the changes is found in your agenda report. The Planning Commission did recommend approval with a vote of 13 to 0 on September 14, 2021. I will highlight some notable change, notable items within the amendments, and they include adding notification requirements to renters or occupants of a site and not just to notification of property owners, clarifying the requirement for posting notification signs along improved rights of way, removing the prohibition to seek an expedited hearing if the zoning request requires a traffic impact analysis or a plan amendment, relocating the allowance of statutory development agreements from Article 1 to Article 3 with other applications and permits, again, establishing the application procedures for street renaming, street closings, and annexation requests, and codifying the guidelines for use for street naming. And then finally, to revise zoning map change requirements to explicitly require subject properties within proposed development plans to be contiguous, and to restructure the deviations to Development Plan Section to make explicit what entails a new zoning request versus an amendment to an approved plan, and to establish procedures to modify roadway improvements determined no longer warranted at the time of full build-out. As a reminder, two actions are requested tonight, first on the ordinance itself, and then, second, on the appropriate statement of consistency. Again, I thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Stock, thank you very much. We appreciate the report. Colleagues, you have now heard the report from staff. I'm going to declare this public hearing open, and I'm going to first ask if there are any questions for the staff by members of the council. Any questions for staff? All right. Is there anyone, this is a public hearing item, is there anyone that would like to be heard on this item? Is there anyone here tonight who would like to be heard on this item, item 18? All right, I see none. All right, I am now going to declare this public hearing closed, and if there is any other discussion that the council would like to have, or any questions for staff at this point, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff for bringing this forward and acknowledging that the conversations have been occurring around the tenants' notifications, and I just want to appreciate them moving that along as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Freeman. Any other comments, colleagues, or questions? Councilmember Caballero?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to staff, and also just curious as to any thoughts on what Commissioner Amendolio said in his comments around the standard being 600 feet and how that applies differently based on density.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stock, could you address that?
Sure. We have talked about in the past about extending, well, let me back up for a second. We used to have various notification ranges based upon different applications, and it ranged from 300 feet to 600 feet to 1,000 feet. And over the past years, it was settled upon 600 feet for consistency for all applications and notifications. I believe we're willing and have no issue with looking to increase notification ranges, especially as policy discussions go around, come about with the comprehensive plan. I think it might be more difficult to base notification on the density of area around a site because it could vary dramatically from one side of a site to another, the variation, and it'd be kind of hard to judge. So we know that other, most jurisdictions that I'm aware of anyway do have a flat notification range, and I think it probably warrants to look at maybe increasing that notification range rather than trying to come up with a variable methodology.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Councilmember, and thank you, Mr. Stock. Colleagues, any more questions or comments on this item? Okay, then we need two motions. One would be to adopt the ordinance admitting the Unified Development Ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Councilmember Middleton, second by Councilmember Freeman, that we adopt the ordinance admitting the Unified Development Ordinance. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
That's great. It means that Councilmember Frelon knows the system. All right, we'll now move to motion two, to adopt the appropriate consistency statement as required per NCGS 160D-605.
So I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Freeman, second by Councilmember Caballero. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Mr. Stock, thank you. We joke a lot about these very intricate items that you bring us, from time to time to update the Unified Development Ordinance, but it is, as we know, absolutely crucial work, and we appreciate you doing it, Mr. Stock.
Thank you.
Colleagues, we'll now move to zoning map change, Rose Walk 2, also a public hearing item. And first, we'll hear the report from staff.
Thank you again. Michael Stock again with the Planning Department. Daniel Joel of Culture Joel Thames proposes to change the zoning designation of 10 parcels totaling approximately 7.865 acres located at the northeast corner of the intersection of West Club Boulevard and North Duke Street. Current zoning is residential urban 52 or RU 52 and planned development residential 10.8 or PDR 10.8. The applicant proposes to change the designation to residential urban multifamily with a development plan, and that would be RU M with a D. The properties are currently designated medium-density residential in the future land use map or FLUM. If the proposed zoning is approved, staff recommends change to the FLUM to designate the property as medium-high-density residential. The development plan, if approved, would allow for up to 310 apartments utilizing major roadway density bonus and a place of worship that's currently existing on the site with a maximum size of 20,000 square feet. However, since OTIA was performed for this proposal, any proposed development could not exceed 149 peak hour trips. Additional commitments detailed are detailed on the cover sheet of the plan and summarized in your report. The Planning Commission recommended approval 12 to 1 on September 14, 2021. And again, councilors requested to take two actions, first on the ordinance and then on the appropriate statement of consistency. Thank you, and I believe the applicant is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stock. Colleagues, you have now heard the report from staff. I'm going to declare this public hearing open, and first I want to ask if there are questions for staff by members of the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone, and thank you. I'm talking to the screen. I instinctively looked to my left. I noted that there was a legacy development plan for this site, and no action had been taken on it. I'm curious as to any potential impacts on this one. Is it from the same people, or, like, I couldn't ascertain that from looking at the attachment? So could you tell me a little bit about that legacy, that pending plan?
Sure. That PDR zoning is the development plan that's currently on a predominant portion of the site, and it would allow for, I believe, 60 to 70 single-family-type dwelling units. It has not been, it's the current zoning for that portion of this site. The proposal in front of you takes in more properties predominantly along North Duke Street, but if this zoning would be approved, that current development plan would be overridden by the development plan that would be possibly approved tonight. The applicant, it is, and it is generally the same people involved from that last PDR approval.
Generally, give or take a couple of folks?
Give or take a couple of folks, yes.
Thank you so much, Mike. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other questions for staff at this time? Colleagues, Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stock, looking at the list of text commitments, how is the developer supposed to commit to item number eight?
Let me pull that up for a second.
I don't really know how they're supposed to commit to keeping trips below 149.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, so when, that's an analysis that's done through the Transportation Department. They do that, and maybe Transportation go into more detail about what they do to establish that. But in our ordinance, we have the traffic impact analysis requirement, and that's required for any development that would go above 149 peak hour trips as determined through analysis by Transportation. What that commitment is saying is that even though there's a maximum of 310 units allowed plus the place of worship, if the combination of those units plus the place of worship would be estimated to trip more than 149 peak hour trips, they would have to come back for rezoning or come in with a proposal that doesn't trip that amount of units. And that determination is made by the Transportation Department.
When is that determination made?
At site plans middle.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other questions or comments, colleagues, for our staff? Any questions for staff at this time? Of course, you'll get more opportunities. All right. Let me just, who's be the first presenter for the proponent? Mr. Jewell? Mr. Jewell, will you come to the microphone so I can ask you a question? Good to see you. Mr. Jewell, are you and Mr. Chapman the only two people here as representatives of the applicant team?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
And so there are a couple of other people listed as proponents of this project, Dave Also Brooks and David Berger. They're not members of your team, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm trying to figure out here a little bit about the timing, that we're going to make sure that everybody gets the time, that they equal time. Can you talk to me a little bit, Mr. Jewell, about the time that you think it will take roughly for you and your team to present?
Mayor, I believe Mr. Chapman and I can probably present in five or six minutes.
Okay. I'm not trying to limit you. I just want to try to make sure we get equal time. Okay, great. Well, welcome, Mr. Jewell. We're glad to have you here, and please go ahead.
First and foremost, it's wonderful to be back in person, and no apologies needed at all for the great ceremony and accolades that were given at the beginning of the meeting. I'm just, I think we're very fortunate to be part of that, so congratulations all around. Getting a little feedback here. Again, I'm Dan Jewell. Thank you for having us, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Madam Manager, Madam Attorney. Be very brief. The proposal before you right now is for a larger assemblage of parcels. Many of you were on the council five years ago when the original project was approved. We think what we're bringing before you today is actually more of what Durham needs today. Again, I want to thank the staff. This was a long process. It took about 18 months from when we submitted to get here today, but your staff has done yeoman's work in working with us and bringing forward a proposal that they are stating that we are consistent with all the goals of the comprehensive plan and the ordinance and recommending consistency of that. I'd like to wrap that up by saying that we were fortunate to get a rare 12 to 1 vote for recommendation for approval by the Planning Commission, and we hope you will take that into consideration. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bob Chapman, friend, colleague, client, to tell you a little bit about why this is a good project for Durham. So we'll be here to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Welcome, Mr. Chapman.
Hello. First of all, I want to congratulate Pierce, Councilmember Frelon. I first met you when you were a volunteer at CSOW, the after-school program down the street, and was very impressed. And then I saw you again at Moog Fest where you were doing the Darth Vader Youth Hackathon, and it was so intriguing. I spent the whole afternoon, and it was astonishing, and now watching what you're doing with the North Star Church of the Arts is amazing. And I hope you're going to go back into politics at some point. You've been a great plus. And Mayor Schul, this is the second time in 49 years, actually many, many times in the last 40. The first time was when I appeared before the student government of a local university here in town, and you were the president, and I described the FM station that we were starting. And it's been a real pleasure and particular pleasure every week to pick up The Independent, an amazing accomplishment. Thank you very much. We rezoned the property, my partner Aaron Lubeck and I, four years ago, looking at a pocket neighborhood-type concept with a walkable green and a very nice, beautiful plan. And two things happened. One is the market for single-family houses went through the roof in Durham, and we suddenly realized that those houses that we'd drawn would be selling for north of $800,000, if not more. And the second thing that happened was that my partner Aaron talked to the neighbors who lived on Duke Street, and they all agreed to sell their property to us. And we had to go for another rezoning. We said, well, what does Durham really need? And we thought that we would have some advantages for providing what I call more appealing rent. We don't have any subsidies or gap financing, but we do think that because our land cost is going to be 80% less than land downtown at its appraised value of our land, and that we can do a good bit of surface parking, and that we don't necessarily need to build big storage tanks under every building, that we'll be able to offer and economically be able to provide superior place to live at a better price. And we commissioned a market study when we first got started from Real Property Research Group, and they came up with a number for the most rent we could possibly get in that area, and it's actually 35% lower than what's being charged six, eight blocks south in downtown. So what our goal is, is to do something at the entryway to Durham that will be seen from the interstate, that it looks great, and that people who work in the park or work at Duke can hop on I-85 and get to easily. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chapman, and we appreciate you being with us. Colleagues, we have a number of people signed up. Colleagues, we have a number of people signed up to speak. We have two other people who are signed up as proponents and then six people who are signed up as opponents, just so you'll know kind of where we are. I'm going to move next to Mr. Dave Also-Brooks. Madam Clerk, can you make Mr. Dave Also-Brooks available to be heard? Thank you. Mr. Also-Brooks, are you with us?
I hope so. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Also-Brooks. Thank you for being with us. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. I've spoken as a proponent of this before, and as referenced, it did pass through the Planning Commission with a 12 to 1 vote. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to come back as a proponent and hopefully see it through. I think we need, and I support dense housing options, and I feel like this is a great option to add in high-demand area. And I support all the reasons that have been mentioned so far. Thank you.
Mr. Also-Brooks, thank you so much for being with us. We appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
We will now hear from David Berger. Madam Clerk, can you make Mr. Berger available to be heard? Mr. Berger, are you available?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we're glad to have you, Mr. Berger. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Well, thank you so much. And again, congratulations, the two of you. Yeah, I also spoke as a proponent before. I live in Trinity Park, and I just wanted to speak in favor of this project. This is exactly what Durham needs a lot more of, which is relatively affordable housing in the downtown corridor or very near downtown that's somewhat walkable. And then for all the reasons before, I hope we see more projects like this, and I hope to see this approved. Thanks so much.
Mr. Berger, thank you very much for being with us. We appreciate you. All right. We now have several people sign up as opponents. And before I call on them, Madam Clerk and Madam Deputy Clerk, thank you for your work tonight. You are, we're back in the saddle with a hybrid meeting. You've got even more difficult duties, and I just want to offer my gratitude. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move now to the opponents. And we'll begin with Janet Levy. Ms. Levy, are you available to be heard? Madam Clerk, can we make Ms. Levy available?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Levy, welcome. You have three minutes. We're glad to have you.
Okay, thank you very much. I oppose this project mainly due to safety concerns. I think a rapid increase in the number of motor vehicles moving in and out of the intersection of Duke and West Club will likely make a dangerous intersection deadly. I have lived close to this intersection for 15 years, and personally, I have seen the frequency of very serious accidents steadily rise. I've witnessed two near fatalities just with my own eyes, and a neighbor's relative was riding a bike through the intersection and was hit by a car. She survived, but believe me, she's not the same person. Also, there are two bus stops near this intersection. An increased traffic would put those passengers in further danger. They cannot cross Club Boulevard. This is a very serious problem presently and will be made much worse by this project. An alternative might be to proceed with the project only after safety precautions are implemented at that intersection at Duke and West Club and the surrounding area along West Club. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us, Ms. Levy. We appreciate you. All right. And Madam Clerk, can we make Mimi Kessler available to be heard, please?
Hello?
Hi, Ms. Kessler, can you hang on one second? Madam Clerk, I believe Ms. Kessler has some photographs, or is it, do we have a PowerPoint? All right. Ms. Kessler, we're glad to have you. Approximately how much time would you think you'll need for your PowerPoint?
Well, first, I want to ask what the changes were that were made. I didn't understand what was reported about that there were changes made before we show my slides.
Why don't you do this, Ms. Kessler? If you don't mind going ahead, and then once we've heard from everyone, we will make sure that your question gets answered by staff. Is that okay?
Okay, yes, that'd be fine. Okay.
Could you just give me an estimate of how long you think it'll take?
I'm hoping it's less than three minutes.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, Ms. Kessler. We're glad to have you.
Thank you. My name is Mimi Kessler. I live, could you slow the slides down a little bit? Go back, please. My name's Mimi Kessler. I live at 1418 Woodland Drive. I sincerely appreciate that we're having this hybrid meeting tonight because some of us are not ready to go into public places again, and I appreciate all the work that it took to do that. I first want to acknowledge that there is a tremendous need for housing, and this is a great location for additional housing. And I'm really glad that it's a good developer that's doing it, a local developer. And I hope that he keeps his word to keep the rents at a lower-than-market rate. I want to reiterate what I said in my email to you, which is that my request should not have to hold up the developer. It is not my intention to do that. But I am concerned about the children and people who walk in our neighborhood being in harm's way because of the increased volume of cars going through our neighborhood to points south. As I said in my email, Woodland, Ruffin, and Knox already suffer from a great deal of cut-through traffic to avoid the congestion and traffic lights on Duke Street, Club Boulevard, and Washington. And that's so that they can go downtown and come home. The entrance, one of the entrances and exits of this development is opposite Woodland Drive, will create that much more traffic, and they, and people will want to zip across Club Boulevard and down the hill on Woodland, and vice versa on the way home. The cut-through traffic that comes by now is very fast. People who live on the street do not speed, but the people cutting through do. The speed is made worse between, on Woodland, between Englewood and Knox by the fact that there is a significant dip in the block in both directions. And these illustrate, on the left is taken from Englewood, and you can see it goes steeply downhill and then uphill. And the one on the right is from Knox going north. So there is momentum created by this dip in both directions. And there's a blind spot in both directions. Next slide, please. As the driver approaches Englewood from either side. So on the left, you are approaching Englewood going south on Woodland, and you see that you can't see a lot of Woodland from here. And then on the right, you can't see Woodland over the peak of the hill. So Woodland being straight across Club for the proposed apartment, this street is very domed. Next slide, please. What I mean by that is that there is a greater-than-average curvature of the road such that the center of the road is significantly higher than next to the gutter. There are no sidewalks. It is almost impossible to walk without hurting yourself by the side of the road. Curvature is very difficult to show in a two-dimensional sense, so this is the best that I could do. The picture on the left is on, is going south approaching Knox, and the picture on the right was taken in front of the white car that you can see on the picture in the left. And I hope that you can see how much my, my very dirty windshield reflects the fact that it is very much at an angle as contrasted with the FedEx truck. Many people walk near the middle, if not down the middle, because it is so uneven here, the curb. This includes families, young children on bikes and tricycles. Next slide, please. And, oh, this is the flattest part of the curvature. This is up near Club Boulevard after the intersection of Englewood. And where the white truck is that you can see, that's where the entrance is going to be to the development. Okay, next slide, please. This was not a staged picture. These were people walking down the street. They're walking in the middle of the road because it's not possible to walk safely at the edge of the road. And this is also true on Ruffin. Ruffin goes from Club Boulevard through to Green Street, which is very popular. They have lots of cut-through traffic. But I don't think that they're going to get that much more traffic because the people coming out of the development will not want to turn left on Club Boulevard in order to turn right on Ruffin. So they're all going to go down Woodland Drive. These are typical residential streets. There are cars parked on both sides. It's not really all that comfortable for traffic, for cars to pass one another on these roads, which you all probably already know. And so people trying to walk have to walk in the middle of the road, and it's already dangerous. So that's also true on Knox. I think that what's going to happen is they're going to come down Woodland and then turn left on Knox and go down to Washington. So I think that there should be a traffic study, but it is not my objective to slow down the developer. And I'm confident that this is going to change the, the traffic on our streets. What I'm asking for is two traffic circles, one at the intersection of Woodland and Englewood, the other at the intersection of Ruffin and Knox. If you all can provide the bones of those, the neighborhood will do all of the planting in the middle. According to the traffic calming document, it costs between $5,000 and $15,000. And in this case, one of the listed disadvantages is actually an advantage in this situation because the circle would cause the cars to slow down enough that they will be able to see pedestrians while they're walking down the road. I also think that there's going to be a need for a speed bump about mid-block between Englewood and Knox on Ruffin. That would slow them down, and that would be good because it's also a very steep angle on Ruffin as it approaches Knox.
Thank you, Ms. Kessler. Ms. Kessler, thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Mr. Mayor, I want to say thank you very much for your leadership, particularly related to the pandemic. I was very proud of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kessler. You're kind to say that, and I agree with you. Our city has done very well. Thank you. Thanks for being with us tonight. Mr. Chapman, don't worry. You will get plenty of time to respond. Our next speaker, Madam Clerk, can we make Virginia Bowman available to be heard, please?
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Bowman. Welcome. We're glad to have you and welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Shul, and members of the Durham City Council and city staff. I'm Jenny Bowman, manager of Northgate Realty that owns the private access road between North Gregson Street and North Duke Street, adjacent to the secondary access proposed for Rosewalk 2. We also manage the BBNT Office Building at 1530 North Gregson Street and are responsible for the maintenance, repairs, and property taxes of this private access road and all the property owners facing internal to the road. We sold a rental property that we owned on North Duke Street to Pocket Partners several years ago when the first Rosewalk project was proposed for single-family homes. In 2020, we were contacted about an informal meeting coordinated by Pocket Properties with the property owners from surrounding neighborhoods about the change to a multifamily apartment development of many more units. We did not receive notice, though, however, of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting about this case. We have continually voiced our concerns about traffic flow, the potential of our private access road becoming a raceway for traffic to cut through to Gregson Street to get to other parts of town, and the placement of an additional intersection at North Duke Street, which we believe would be a major traffic hazard. There is an existing vehicular and pedestrian signal at West Club and North Duke Street. When that light is green at the intersection, people come flying over the hill to get on to Interstate 85 or go into North Durham. As you've already heard, there have been many horrible traffic accidents here. It is our understanding that the secondary access onto North Duke Street is not absolutely necessary to this development and that the traffic impact analysis was not required for the rezoning. The traffic information that we have been provided is all based on estimates and assumptions. Last week, we met with John Sandor of NCDOT and Pocket Partners, and we all agreed that proposing another signalized intersection at North Duke Street was not an ideal situation and needed further study. The developer's text comment in the application for rezoning stating that it has to satisfy the MUT CD warrants and the NCDOT approval prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy does not provide sufficient comfort that this intersection is going to be studied in a thorough manner, and it does not provide a timeframe for when this warrant would be completed. While, like others, we think the quality of this development and the type is very good, we will appreciate your thoughtful consideration of our major concerns about traffic safety in this area. Thank you.
Ms. Bowman, thank you so much for being with us. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, we'll now hear Madam Clerk from Mary Copac. Madam Clerk, could you please make Ms. Copac available to be heard?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Copac. Welcome. We're glad to have you. Are you, thank you for being with us, and you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. And first of all, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Copac.
Yes, truly appreciated. When I came to sign up to join the meeting, I was faced with an unfortunate choice. I had to choose whether to be for, oh, bless you, or against the issue before we had our hearing. And I wish that we did not have to do that because in principle, I do support this, this development. I honestly do. I live at 1502 Woodland, and I've been thinking about this. I try to put an issue into perspective, accounting for the needs and responsibilities of all parties concerned. I find it easier to do this as the years go by because I have a lot of history now in my age and a lot of parallels that I can find. I would like to share my thoughts on this issue, too. I'd like to know my late husband and I-
Ms. Copac?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, I apologize.
Okay.
Could you speak up a little bit? I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing. If you could maybe get closer to your mic or speak up a little.
Okay, is this better? I'll go on. Is this a little bit better then?
Not much better.
No, really?
I want to make sure we're able to hear you.
Okay, I'm going to take my earbuds out and try, and try this, perhaps this will-
That's a lot better. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, well, it's good to know. I'll continue. My late husband, Roger, and I raised our children in a neighborhood that bears some resemblance to this one on Woodland. Our street was a dead end to a very busy commercial street. We lived close enough to it that on a summer night, we could smell the bakery at work at the end of our alley. We understood that Berkeley Boulevard was a pass-through to Silver Spring. But our street had stop signs. It had sidewalks. It had measures that allowed all of us to feel safe and to carry on a civic life on the streets, not just only in our homes. But as the commercial district grew on Silver Spring and apartments were built along there, the traffic increased dramatically. And in recent years, the village has- And in recent years, the village has installed traffic calming measures on Silver Spring, including a, quote, "inconvenient for some island" that prevents left turns on a Berkeley. But you see, my point is, the village saw an issue and worked together to address it. And now I live on Woodland, and I have the joy of watching my two grandsons, as well as their other small neighbors growing up here. But I'm afraid that our neighbors do not feel as safe as they used to, and soon, traffic will increase far beyond the growth we have seen in the six years I have lived here. And we all are facing a choice. We can wait and count the vehicles that will come from a complex of over 300 dwellings, not 80 or 90 with 149 trips included. There are 32 homes on Woodland, by the way. Or we can advocate now for measures that will help secure the safety of little ones, adults with their pets, the infirm with walkers, and parents and grandparents with strollers. From my part, I tried to take some responsibility when I did some landscaping a few years ago. I tried to provide a safe space by including a walkway near the curb with a low stone wall. Sometimes I see a grandparent and a child sitting on it, and that warms my heart. I feel that my responsibility is also to advocate for my neighbors, and I'd like to ask you to work together and guarantee that something is done, measures will be put in place, before a shovel is put into the ground at Rosewalk. I would like the city, the state DOT, and the developer to take this very seriously. And I'm sure that you will hear from others tonight what our neighbors need. And again, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Copac. We very much appreciate you being with us. Madam Clerk, next up is Joe Deem. Could you please make Mr. Deem available to be heard?
I'm here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Deem, welcome. We're glad to have you, and you also have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you, council members. My name is Joe Deem. I live at 1501 Woodland Drive. I want to be clear that I don't oppose this Rosewalk project in principle, and in fact, I think there's a lot here to support. We need more housing in Durham, and increased density is a good thing in the right areas. Having said that, I would just like to quickly express some objections to the specific plan, especially around traffic safety. If you all are inclined to support the plan, then I'd like to ask that you make your approval contingent on the developer taking some additional steps to ensure the project doesn't unfairly impact the surrounding areas and add to traffic safety problems. I live one block south of the development on Woodland Drive. The plan for the Rosewalk project has an entrance on Club Boulevard directly across from Woodland. I'm concerned that this will funnel hundreds more cars onto smaller side streets, especially Woodland and Knox, which are cut-throughs to downtown but are not made to handle this traffic. As you saw from Mimi's photos, these are small streets with on-street parking. They're not striped. They don't have sidewalks. The intersections generally in this area are two-way rather than four-way stops. People ride bikes, push strollers, walk dogs. Again, there are no sidewalks. The residents walk in the street, and they have to walk around the cars that are parked on the street. Putting hundreds more cars onto these streets is a recipe for disaster, especially if they come speeding in order to cross Club Boulevard. If this plan goes forward as proposed, that will happen. And once these streets become unsafe, it won't be the developer's problem at that point. It'll be the city's problem. So the time to avoid the problem in the first place is now by making sure the developer avoids it. Again, this is a fine site for increased density, but vehicle traffic that comes with that density should be routed onto the streets that can handle it, like Club, Duke, and Gregson, wide streets with traffic signals and sidewalks. So if the council wants to approve the plan, I just ask that you please make that approval contingent on the developers keeping traffic off of the side streets like Woodland Drive and Ruffin Street. The developers can move the entrances or configure them to do this. I hope they will, but I don't think they will unless they're required to. So I simply ask that you make that one of your conditions in order to approve the request. Thank you.
Mr. Deem, thank you for being with us. We very much appreciate it. Madam Clerk, we'll now go to John Pace's Wiles.
Yeah, hi. This is John.
Mr. Pace's Wiles, welcome. We're glad to have you with us, and you also have three minutes.
Great, thank you so much. So my name is John Pausaswales, and I live at 713 West Club Boulevard. I'm at the corner of Club and Woodland. So, yeah, and like others that have spoken already, my primary concern is the traffic. I guess I'm pleased to see that this iteration of the project has the main, or what's supposed to be the main entrance into the development on Duke Street rather than Club. But there is still, I guess, another access point at Woodland and Club that I am concerned about. You know, Club Boulevard is a busy street, but it's a neighborhood. You know, I live on Club. I have neighbors that live on Club. Some of my neighbors unfortunately have, you know, a short driveway that they have to back onto Club, you know, to get out of their driveway, and I'm just a little afraid that this is going to just exacerbate that issue and pull more and more cars onto Club Boulevard. But as others have spoken, I'm mostly concerned about Woodland. And, you know, it's, as you've seen in the photos, it's a small residential street, and there's, you know, there's kids, and there's people, and there's dogs, and it just seems like it's potentially, you know, a disaster going to happen. But if, you know, if this is a major access point to the development, and then that would be a bad thing. But I guess there was one idea that I read that would be good if it came to pass, and that is, that if that access point at Club and Woodland could be a right-in, right-out of the development, so no one would be able to go through the development, out of the development, and across Club into Woodland if it were only permitted to take a right turn onto Club or a right turn into the development. I think, you know, that would probably be a good idea. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being with us. We appreciate you very much, Mr. Pausaswales. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I did receive your text. So it seems like there are three more people in the queue, and they are proponents. Is that correct? Okay, great. Thank you for this. So colleagues, now that we are in a different mode, and I should just point this out to Mayor-elect O'Neill as well, the clerk is texting me about people who are in the queue and need to be heard. So this is just a -- and she's also texting Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. So in case Mayor Pro Tem is presiding, both of us will have the information. So just want to let you know where that's coming from. Okay, Madam Clerk, thank you. Would you like to make Tiffany Elder available to be heard, Madam Clerk? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Shul and council members.
Good evening, Ms. Elder. Welcome. We're glad to have you, and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I live at 802 Birch, and I'm speaking in support of the Rosewalk project. I'm sure that everyone here is aware that Durham's rental rates and housing prices are skyrocketing, in part due to continued lack of available housing. Rental rates specifically have gone up over 20% over the last year alone, and we continue to just need denser housing development in Durham, especially in the urban tier, and specifically more housing options in the high-demand Trinity Park area. And the Rosewalk location is a very good location for higher-density housing out of what we have available in the city. I was glad to see that Planning Commission passed it with so much support, and I hope the council moves forward in support with the same zeal this evening.
Ms. Elder, thank you so much for being with us. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move to Dan Bach, Madam Clerk.
Good evening.
Mr. Bach, thank you for being with us. Welcome. You also have three minutes.
Thank you. Dan Bach, I live at 205 Albemarle Street. I'm a proponent of this proposal. I'm a resident of Trinity Park. I think Trinity Park and the areas around it are a great place to live, and more people should be able to live here. This kind of development accomplishes that. I do agree with many of the concerns that my neighbors have about traffic safety. I hope the city addresses those concerns via traffic calming measures and pedestrian infrastructure. I don't think it should hold up this development, so I hope you vote to approve. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Bach, thank you. We so appreciate you being with us tonight. We will now move to Cheryl Schifflit. Madam Clerk, can you make Ms. Schifflit available to be heard? Ms. Schifflit, are you with us? Ms. Schifflit, are you available to be heard? All right, if Ms. Schifflit does come in, Madam Clerk, we'll try to get her in at a later time. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I believe that's everyone. Thank you. All right. So I'll ask now for either Mr. Chapman or Mr. Jewell if you wanted to respond to some of these traffic concerns that you've heard.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to endorse the suggestion made by Ms. Kessler for the roundabouts. Aaron Lubek, my partner, and I were involved in publishing a booklet called Bicycle Boulevards for Durham, and we recommended 19 roundabouts in the heart of the city. And I think about half of them have been built, and I'm a big believer, it doesn't have to be a major production. It really can be a very small impediment in the middle. The ones we produce, propose actually had artworks in the middle, but that, we'll probably get there. Secondly, both of the connections, which are referred to as access points on the plan, require approval. The one on West Club requires approval of the Durham Transportation Department, and the one that we would like to have on North Duke Street requires approval by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. We agree that that's, North Duke Street is a speedway, but people who want to use I-85 or go north on Duke Street, it's, I think it actually doesn't reduce traffic on Duke Street to make them go onto Club Boulevard first and then take a right and then go. But that's something that would be determined when the warrant study is done, which we are required to do and pay for. If the warrant study determines that for safety, and safety alone, that it makes sense for signalization, we have to, we have said we would pay for that, but we're not requiring it. We're not required to do it unless the study and DOT agree that it should be done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chapman. Colleagues, we've heard everyone who has signed up. Let me just ask, is there anyone else here who has not been heard who would like to speak on this item? Anyone else? And Madam Clerk, maybe we could try Ms. Schifflit again. Ms. Schifflit, are you available to be heard? Okay. Colleagues, we now have any questions or comments for either staff or the applicant? Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for staff. As Mr. Chapman just pointed out, the site access point to this proposed project off of West Club Boulevard is noted subject to City of Durham approval. What does that look like? What is necessary to gain City of Durham approval for the construction of that entry?
Who is that a question for, Mr.?
That's our staff, as to which staff they can figure it out.
So that might be Mr. Stock. It might be Mr. Judge. We'll find out. Mr. Stock, did you hear the question from Councilmember Reese?
Yes, and I see Mr. Judge popping on.
Nice, nice.
Mr. Judge, great. Are you with us?
Sure, yes. Bill Judge, Assistant Transportation Director. So, yeah, during the site plan process, the location requirements for that site access point will be reviewed and approved as part of the site plan and then construction drawing process. If it's going to be a public street, I think this is more likely going to be a private driveway than a public street, so might not require construction drawings. But things that we'll be looking at would just be like driveway radii, pedestrian crossings along Club Boulevard, make sure that pedestrians can cross the driveway adequately. Public works will be looking at storm drainage, any turn lane improvements. We would not be requiring a right turn lane on Club. There is a future project to do a road diet on Club to reduce those four lanes to three, so we'd want to coordinate with that. But it would essentially be an administrative process as part of the site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. I appreciate that. Does your -- I'll come back to that in a minute. You've heard some of the residents, specifically a number of folks who live on Woodland, talking about some things that would help them have more comfort about this project moving forward, specifically speed bumps along Woodland Drive between Club and Knox and a roundabout at the intersection of Woodland and Englewood. Can you talk a little bit about what the prospects are for doing something like that along Woodland in order to make those residents feel safer about the prospect of cars, as some of the neighbors have said, cutting through on Woodland?
Yes, so at this point, there are no proffers or requirements by the developer to provide any traffic calming measures, so whether this development's approved or not. The city, through transportation, we do have a traffic calming program, which is primarily speed humps, but we have, as has been mentioned, we have done a few traffic circles of various types. More of the ones that we're doing more recently are a little less permanent. They're more pollards and artwork and other types of things versus a raised concrete median, primarily due to the cost. But so they could initiate a request, any of the neighbors, through our department, where we would do speed and volume studies and look at the geometry of the road, try to determine which improvements would be most appropriate for this neighborhood. Where it'd also be coordination with the fire department to make sure that any improvements that we're doing don't drastically impact their response times and that they're in agreement with them. So then, once we've come up with a plan, then we would work with the neighborhood on petitions to make sure that there was neighborhood support.
Mr. Judge, do you not see a chicken-and-egg problem here? The creation, if we vote to approve this project tonight, then between now and the time that the certificate of occupancy is issued, the traffic level on Woodland will be what it currently is. After the certificates of occupancy are issued and folks start to move in, the neighbors fear traffic will increase, at which point that's when they need the traffic calming measures, not -- and so how would either we as council members, you as staff, or neighbors kind of square that circle and try to get something going now in anticipation of future traffic increases?
We could, as part of, you know, if it's a neighborhood-initiated request, we could certainly consider potential increases in volume that would be created by the development. It's very difficult to estimate speeds that the development might generate and how that might impact. We would most likely just assume that the speeds of the current folks using the road would be similar to folks that maybe are cutting through from the development. But as part of that study, if this zoning is approved and there is an active site plan, we wouldn't necessarily do it just for the zoning, but we would for an active site plan. We would go ahead and make, we could make some assumptions as to additional traffic volumes.
That's great to hear. I appreciate that. And what's the general timeframe that the city follows from the request by residents for these kinds of traffic calming measures and the installation of those measures, specifically speed humps and roundabout?
So to complete the study is usually just a matter of weeks. It's just a matter of getting some data collection, getting our data collectors out there to collect that information and to develop a plan. The amount of time it takes to then implement it can really vary depending on the type of improvement. Speed humps, we have an annual contract or whether or not our forces can do it, and funding availability, as well as then potentially availability, as well as then potentially, if, if to gain neighborhood support, typically we would send out a petition to somebody that's in the neighborhood. And sometimes those petitions come back in a week, sometimes they come back in six months. So it's difficult for me to answer exactly how long it would take, but assuming it comes back in the week timeframe, it would be essentially a matter of, most likely, months, about six, we say usually six to 12 months, depending on the construction season. So if it were to come back right now, this is not a real good time, but for doing speed humps, we probably would not do those till the spring, so.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear, Mr. Judge. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask the African two quick questions and then I'll step away? Gentlemen, first of all, how long do you envision it taking to have folks moving into this project if we were to grant approval to the rezoning tonight?
I believe that it's going to take one year to go through the site plan process. And then simultaneously with that, we would begin the architectural design and the detailed planning, so that we would want to be able to break ground more or less right after the site plan is approved. Typically, a project like this takes 14 months to build, so we're probably talking about a little over two years before anybody could actually move in.
That's great. Thank you. One last question. I heard exactly one person from the public hearing talk about a potential solution to the concerns that neighbors have about residents of the proposed new neighborhood or development shooting across West Club at high rates of speed and traveling south on Woodland. And that is, that would be a commitment on your part to make sure that the, what is likely to be, according to our Transportation Department, a private drive, is slightly offset from Woodland, to make those cut acrosses much less likely. Can you talk about that?
That definitely could be done. The geometry might even favor that. One of the applicants for the rezoning owns a duplex next to the church, and we do not own it, but it has just gone on the market because of the owners passed away and the heirs put it on the market, and we've made an offer to purchase that. If we own that, we could probably more easily move it. We were sort of taking advantage of the existing curb cut that the city built, but that certainly could be moved. And that's a site planning thing. Several of the people that we've shown the plans, the site to, have wondered if it wouldn't be better to do that. So that's, that's something we certainly would look at very, very carefully. And I don't see any real advantage, I don't think people typically are going to want to cross four lanes of traffic to, to go down Woodland. I've gone to the site hundreds of times, and I've probably driven down Woodland twice. I like the streets, a beautiful street.
I will say that it does seem-
I think we all said a little bit, it would be much less likely. You're right.
Yep. And I think from, from knowing that neighborhood a little bit, it does seem, I don't really 100% understand the mentality of someone who would shoot across Club, go two blocks down Woodland to hit Knox, and that's the end of Woodland. You know, it seems like there's lots of better ways to speed through, I just don't understand that part.
We actually did a Google Maps problem to solve, which was going from Rosewalk to Mohnuts or to Whole Foods. And in both cases, there was much more congestion on West Club. There were five congestion points, but even with those congestion points, it was 25, it took 25% longer to go on Woodland to Whole Foods. And, excuse me, that was to Mohnuts, and Whole Foods was 16% longer. So, and that was at 5:00 in the afternoon that we, and you can go on Google Maps and do that yourself.
The last thing I wanted to say, and then I'll let my colleagues get in, is that I understand the issue about needing to wait until site plan approval to know exactly where that entrance is going to be, but at site plan approval, I have no influence over that process, and rightly so. That's a staff process, I need to stay over on this side of the lane. This is the point in the process where I do have some influence. So by expressing my concern about that and my, my interest in having that offset, I hope you'll take that in mind tonight.
It makes, it makes total sense, and I believe we're going to be successful in acquiring that property, which is in the rezoning already, so it won't affect the zoning. And that makes it much easier to do that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chapman. And thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to share just publicly that I did want to note that there, I mean, with the signing of the new infrastructure bill, I think it's kind of timely in acknowledging just how much our traffic and infrastructure needs happen to be in the city. And so just noting that this is just one, but there are many, and I think it'll be really important for us to really understand just what is included in this infrastructure bill for us as a city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilmember.
I also want to thank Councilmember Reese for covering my question.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Freeland, and then followed by Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Freeland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just really appreciated the presentation that the folks kind of showing us the curvature of the street and some of the issues that local residents are facing that force them to kind of walk down the middle. And it seems like even if, even if we, the developer is able to shift where the access point is, it would behoove the residents to advocate for a speed hump and to, and to get that going anyway. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there. Sometimes, sometimes we react to new development, but the ideas that kind of come from galvanizing community are good ideas that should be done anyway. So just appreciative of the community members who reached out and advocated for that. I had a question about the traffic circle for Mr. Judge. I was just curious what the price difference was between the kind of concrete raised, more expensive version of the traffic circle versus the one where you just kind of put up some art? You know, I'm curious about the price differential between the two traffic circle calming options for Mr. Judge.
Yes. So Bill Judge Transportation, once again. The last sort of concrete traffic circle we did was actually a couple of years ago over off Trinity Avenue, and I believe it was a little over $20,000 to construct. Costs have gone up quite a bit, so since then, I would say that that's probably going to be more in the $30,000 range where the, just using some paint and bollards and signage we can, we can usually do for probably, yeah, like $3,000 or so. So it's significantly cheaper, about 10% of the cost versus having to get into the concrete and the drainage and the landscaping.
Yeah, I mean, thank you, Mr. Judge. That's a big difference, 3K to 30. But if, that's something that a lot of the residents kind of were asking for, and I wonder if the developer would be willing to kind of proffer the traffic circle, which seems like it would regardless address some of the concerns that we heard from almost everyone.
If we can make this as a amendment without starting everything all over again, we'd like to make a proffer of $30,000 toward the traffic, traffic circle, toward one, at least one of them.
Great. Well, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I'm just going to ask our staff about that, if that's doable. Mr. Stock, you heard Councilmember Freeland's question and the proffer from Mr. Chapman. Is that a, is that a profferable proffer?
I believe it is. We would need a timing mechanism for that proffer, similar to the timing mechanism that is already proffered for the donation to the Affordable Housing Fund. So, and I believe, looking at the plan, excuse me while I pull it up and see what the wording is. It says, "Prior to the issuance of the first multifamily building permit, a voluntary contribution of $50,000 will be made to the Durham Affordable Housing Loan Fund by the developer." If council is, is comfortable with that timing, that could be the same timing mechanism. It could also be done at the time of, prior to site plan approval, which would be done, which would be an earlier timing mechanism.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stock. Mr. Chapman, or Mr. Jewell, do you all want to comment on that timing mechanism? Which one do you want? Did you hear Mr. Stock offered you two options?
Prior, prior to issue of the first building permit.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Thank you, Councilmember Freeland. And go ahead, councilmember.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to, yeah, thank you for making-
Thank you. It's a great idea.
Yes, and, and I think, again, just, I was telling some residents who emailed, expressing gratitude for them reaching out, because when, when community members speak up, good things happen. And I think that's being a really good neighbor of y'all, and glad to hear that, that's going to happen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Let me just ask a question, just thinking about this a little bit more. Mr. Judge, could we get you back a second?
Yes, I'm here. I think my video may have been disabled, but, yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Judge. Mr. Judge, you heard the proffer from the applicant. I assume that even with this proffer, you would still have to test the, you know, talk to the fire department and that kind of thing about the potential approval for a traffic circle. Is that true?
Yes. The fire department is generally less opposed to the circle option. It doesn't have as great an impact to their response times as some of the speed humps and damage to their equipment that the speed humps cause. But we would want it still subject to making sure that we have neighborhood support. We know that there's definitely a number of residents that have expressed interest, but sometimes the folks that live right at the intersection are opposed to them. So we'd, we'd want to make sure that, that we had that support.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Judge. All right. Councilmember Freeland, anything else? Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the benefits of having brilliant colleagues, they kind of anticipate and touched on what you were going to say. I was going to say, Mr. Chapman, I was, I was intrigued at your, your full-throated endorsement of, of traffic circles and even the willingness to pay for signalization where it indicated. And I did, I did note that, it seemed like you had a pretty well-attended community meeting. And, and I'm wondering, is this your first time tonight kind of indicating your willingness to pay for signalization or do the traffic circles? Was this your first opportunity to go on record, particularly given the entrance meeting, the community meeting that was held?
The payment for a signal on North Duke Street is something that we've had as our idea from the very beginning. My biggest concern has been that if Northgate Shopping Center is redeveloped and becomes a real vibrant hub, that people would want to walk there, and they would have to cross Duke. And so I was thinking that we were really protecting the walkers more than the pedestrians. Quite frankly, we did not know that that was a private street until Ms. Bowman attended the meeting and said, "We own that street. You can't make this decision without us being involved, and we will not do anything without their being involved." They would involve a connection to that street. But if DOT decides, once we present the evidence that our professionals would gather, that a signal was warranted, we would pay for it. We're not required to put it in unless they decide that it's warranted. And as far as Woodland is concerned, we really, quite frankly, didn't think about Woodland until about three days ago. Ms. Kessler and a young lady who works for the city actually called me, and she, she was very concerned. This is Ms. Dillard, and I had about an hour and a half, hour conversation, and we've had emails since. And we want people in Woodland to be safe, and we want to do whatever. And I, what I said to her is, "You've got my phone number, and it's my cellphone number. Give it to everybody. If there's a problem, please call. We want to solve it." And I think the suggestions about the traffic circles are great suggestions, and I'm happy that, to be able to make this offer to participate in the cost of them.
Thank you, thank you so much for that. And I know the people of that community are, are appreciative. I did, Mr. Judge, if you're, if you're around, wanted to ask a question because about the, and, and this is, I guess for people that are watching who don't live in this community, I, I mean, I get emails still from, from areas like Parkwood, who have issues with folks speeding through there, and Merrickmore, other neighborhoods. And I, I heard tonight that we, we gave voice to the process of getting speed humps, and citizens and residents can indeed apply. And, you know, it, everybody seems pretty, pretty, you know, excited and supportive for this particular community. But for those that may be watching, Mr. Judge, could you just demystify a little bit that just applying for it doesn't mean you're going to get it? Because I, I instantly thought about the fire department when they started mentioning speed humps, and is this particular area more amenable to speed humps than, say, a Parkwood or other areas that? I've actually forwarded emails to you about other areas that are concerned about speeding and traffic calming measures. So is, is, could you just kind of speak to, just simply applying for it doesn't mean it's going to happen, you know, for communities watching, that it's guaranteed? Could you just speak to a little bit to that, to that, about that process for residents?
Yes. Yes, so our department has maintained a traffic calming program for a number of years now. The primary tool that we've had has been speed humps for really about the last 15-plus years. Many of the locations that qualify for speed humps have, we've already received petitions or that, that meet the criteria for it, but we're still finding, there are streets that, for various reasons, either don't qualify for fire department emergency response or because of grades. I know particularly, that was one thing I was concerned about when I was looking at Woodland Drive. When there's severe downhill grades, we tend not to do speed humps because that, they can be dangerous for, for cyclists going downhill and other cause drainage problems during freezing times as well. So, so we do have criteria related to that. So, and in attempt to do that, our department has utilized these sort of mini-traffic circles, paint and posts type options, and trying to sort of increase our, our toolbox of options available to relieve traffic, to provide neighborhoods additional options. But, so any neighborhood really within Durham can contact our office. We'll start an investigation, determine the most appropriate treatment necessary.
Got you. Thank you so much, Mr. Judge. I appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll be back.
Thank you very much, councilmember. Councilmember Caballero?
Thank you. I first want to say this is my neighborhood, the streets that people walk, where there are no sidewalks and no Knoxville. I will say that there is some traffic calming measures on Knox, close to Washington, that alleviate a lot of the problems that some of the neighbors are discussing on Woodland and Ruffin. It is absolutely true that you have to walk in the middle of the road to walk your dog. And I really appreciate the neighbors coming out. I will say that there are folks who will be impacted that are friends of ours, and, but I also want to, you know, walk the talk, which is, we desperately need housing in this city. So even if this is my neighborhood, and I am on that corner every single day, Club and Duke, often getting onto I-85 or staying, you know, further down Club, these are streets that my children ride bikes on, they are streets that my children walk. This is something that will impact me personally every day, and I will still be voting yes for it, because ultimately, it is a benefit for the city of Durham. We desperately need housing. I very much appreciate the developers' proffer of traffic circle, money towards traffic circles. I think that will alleviate, hopefully it works out, once our staff determines if it's feasible. I will say that one of the things that our planning commissioners did note was that there will be increases to Durham Public Schools, and was just curious if the developer had thought about any commitments to those. I know that there's already been a proffer made about affordable housing. That was a question for the applicant.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember. So the, did you hear Councilmember Caballero's question, Mr. Chapman?
We had not considered a voluntary contribution to DPS. I'm very involved with a school that's in competition, Central Park School for, I'm founding board member. Central Park School for, I'm founding board member. We strongly support the public schools of Durham and want them to be great, and want to do anything we possibly can to be helpful. But that had not come up in any of the research that we'd been done. This is really the, one person did mention it in the planning commission, but there've been no specifics given to us about what the concerns are.
I thought the staff report did determine that there was an additional amount of students that would be added to Durham Public Schools. I can't remember the number, though.
I think, was it 50? Dan, can you look? I think it was 59. I'm not sure. We'll find that and get right back to you in just a second.
Thank you, Councilmember. So, Mr. Chapman, just to follow up on Councilmember Caballero's question. It's, many of our developers proffer $500 per additional student to Durham Public Schools. So you might want to think about that when you and Mr. Jewell are discussing it.
Can I wait for Dan to tell me how many?
Absolutely, you can. I'm not trying to get an answer out of you right now. I actually have another question that I wanted to ask.
If my math is correct, according to staff, we have 28, 8, and 5. So 36, 41 students. Maybe Mr. Stock can confirm that, but that's my read. 31 additional students.
We'd like to make that proffer for $500 plus, times 41.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chapman. All right. Councilmember Reese, did you have your hand up again? Okay. Councilmember Freeman?
I just wanted to ask staff if they thought that the proffer for the $30,000 could be included in kind of an equity and infrastructure fund? Just acknowledging that I feel like this is gonna be a trend that Councilmember Freeland has started.
Mr. Stock, did you hear the question?
Yes, I did. It really depends upon the wish of council, but I see Director Young popping in there.
All right. Director Young?
Good evening, everyone. I would say that any time that folks are proffering monetary donations, they either need to be for the direct improvements that will be constructed on the site or immediately adjacent to remain to the impacts generated by the site, or they need to go to an established fund. So unless Mr. Judge can confirm that there is already such a fund that's operating and in place, I would suggest that we keep it linked to this particular site for the improvements for this site.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. I can confirm that there is not a set aside fund similar to the Affordable Housing Fund that for these traffic calming measures, those are just line items in the city's budget, in Transportation Department's budget. So I would suggest for now to keep the proffer just to the city of Durham, and we can work internally to figure out how to make that happen.
Thank you very much, Councilmember, and thank you, Mr. Judge. Colleagues, I, can I, is Ms. Bowman still with us? Ms. Jenny Bowman, Madam Clerk. Ms. Bowman, are you available to be heard?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman, I was unsure of the, I was listening, but I couldn't really understand very well your key concerns. Could you summarize them? We've been talking a lot about the Club Boulevard entrance. And now, your concern is on the Duke Street side, and the fact that you own the private road that is directly across from where that entrance would occur, if I understand correctly. Could you summarize your concerns about that?
Yes. We had understood that the note, the text that was added to the application for rezoning, for the warrant of the signal, there is no data for that. And again, we had a conversation with NC DOT, and they did not think that that was the best solution for that situation in terms of traffic calming, to have people coming from one intersection very quickly downhill to the next, to another signalized intersection at the access point on Duke Street. So the fact that that is in the text, one, that that warrant would be studied, and two, there was no timeframe on it, is a concern for us. We don't think that that intersection should be signalized. It should not be a marked signal. I mean, crosswalk for pedestrians, we think you're asking for trouble there. Like on West Club, we think a right in only and a right out only would be the optimal situation for the drive or access point on Duke Street.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bowman. That was very helpful. Okay. So, Mr. Judge, are you with us?
Yes.
Let me just say first, Mr. Judge, if I had my last night of public hearings and you weren't here, I would just feel really bad. So I'm glad you're with us. Mr. Judge, you heard Ms. Bowman's comments. I'm very familiar with this area and went over to look at it again. I live on Club Boulevard. The, is it likely that the DOT would approve a traffic signal between the two traffic signals that are already existing there on Duke? What are your thoughts on that?
So, yeah, I think it's relatively unlikely that a signal will be approved at that location. The spacing from Club Boulevard to the intersection and at Duke, and as well as from the intersection to the signal at Duke and Gregson is really not ideal for a signal. That being said, we have similar spacing between signals at Gregson and Club and Northgate Mall entrance and the driveway at Gregson. So there is precedent at that spacing. But unless there's just severe volumes that can't otherwise be addressed and potential safety problems, I don't think that NC DOT is likely to approve the signal just because of the impacts the flow along North Duke Street. That it would probably cause additional delay and potentially backing up vehicles on Duke Street, the Club Boulevard.
Do you, is this study required, Mr. Judge?
It is. So the site did not require traffic impact analysis, but I believe the applicant is proffering to do a signal warrant analysis at that intersection for potentially signalizing and subjecting, getting NC DOT to agree with that analysis.
Mr. Judge, what do you think about the advisability of a signalized intersection there?
Yeah, that's why I said, I think it's unlikely that NC DOT is likely to approve it. From the city standpoint, a signal would provide an opportunity for pedestrians crossing from the development that maybe want to get to the commercial uses there that, yeah, that Ms. Bowman and her company owns or manage. So we do see some advantages for allowing pedestrian crossings on North Duke Street at the signalized intersection. But, so that we're not opposed to it if NC DOT were willing to allow it.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. All right, colleagues. Any additional questions or comments for the applicant or staff at this time? Any additional questions for the applicant or staff at this time? Okay. I'm gonna declare this public hearing closed, and the matter is back before the council for any discussion or a motion. If we were to have a motion, we'd adopt an ordinance, submitting the unified development ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Michael Stock with the Planning Department. I was wondering if you'd like, I was wondering if you'd like to go over a summary of the additional commitments before any further discussions and get any clarity that might be necessary.
Yeah, sure, that would be great. But let me just go ahead, Mr. Stock, and just say, was a motion by Councilmember Freeman, and I believe seconded by Councilmember Freeland, to adopt an ordinance submitting the UDO. Go ahead, Mr. Stock. That would be great.
Thank you, and I do apologize for interrupting.
No worries.
So I, so I have, I believe, two, maybe three commitments, and I'll need clarity on it. The first one is that prior to the issuance of a multifamily, first multifamily building permit, a donation of $30,000 shall be made to the city of Durham for a traffic circle. We did not, no one specified a particular location. I know that there were two, during the public hearing itself, two potential locations were identified. One at Woodland and Englewood, and another, I believe, at Ruffin and Knox. And I'd be happy to be corrected if I got those wrong. And we would be fine if, unless the applicant wanted otherwise to be more, to specify if approved at either the intersection of Woodland and Englewood or Ruffin and Knox to add that additional specificity to the committed element.
Thank you, Mr. Stock. Is the developer ad amenable to that? Yes, Mr. Stock, they're amenable. Thank you.
Okay. And the second one that I heard is the $500 times 41 students. We can get that language in there. That'll be clear enough language. The third one that I was not quite sure of was the offset discussion of the West Club Boulevard entrance from Woodland. And I don't know if Mr. Judge, if Bill wants to comment on that, whether that's something that, or if the applicant wants to commit to seeking offset as approved by the Transportation Department, or leaving that more-
Yeah. Mr. Stock, thank you. So let me first ask the applicant, was that a proffer? Or was it something that you hoped to be able to do?
We believe that we will be able to acquire the additional property. We've made an offer, and we believe that it will close as early as early December. If that does, then we have the ability to adjust the entryway. We're not doing site planning now, but we've done enough previous iterations of ideas that I think, I don't know how far we're talking about and all that, but I'd like to say we will absolutely consider it in conjunction with the city, and we'll let the city help advise us, or accept their advice. That would be the proffer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chapman. I don't actually think that's a proffer in the sense in which we usually meet it. Is that correct, Mr. Stock? Were you able to hear, Mr. Chapman?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Mayor.
And do you agree with what I said?
Yes.
Okay. So we are, and, you know, Mr. Reese, Councilmember Reese, you had asked some questions about it. Do you want to make any further comments?
Just to say that in conjunction with the other new proffers made by the applicant this evening, and in recognition that the applicant doesn't own the property that would be needed to offset it in that direction, I'm mostly comfortable with where they've ended up. And I could be more comfortable, but I get it. I get it.
All right.
That's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Stock, are you, are we good?
Yes, I have two, so we have those two additional commitments. The one for the school donation and the traffic circle.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stock. Colleagues, I'll just make a quick comment before we vote. I'm definitely voting for this. I think that, you know, relative to other rents, we don't, this is not proffered, but we've seen the, I've seen the pro forma. And I think that this will be relatively affordable. Not as affordable as something subsidized, but relatively affordable. And that we, this is a really good place for density, excellent place for density. And I think there's a lot to like about this development. I think that, I do, and I appreciate, I appreciate the proffers, especially of the traffic circle, funding the traffic circle. And I think that's very helpful, and I want to appreciate the folks from Woodland and other surrounding streets for being here. I do have some remaining concerns about the situation with the traffic signal on Duke, but I don't think that's something we can solve tonight. I understand the concerns of Ms. Bowman. I think they're important concerns. But I think that we just, that we're gonna have to hear more from both our Transportation Department and especially DOT with their study before we're able to really comment. And I think that what's good about this development, in my mind, outweighs that concern that I don't think we can actually solve tonight. So those are my thoughts, colleagues. Any other comments before we vote? Okay. All right, colleagues. We have a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk, would you open the vote, please? Please close the vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, can I have a motion to adopt the consistency statement?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Councilmember Freeman, seconded by Councilmember Caballero, that we adopt the appropriate consistency statement. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Mr. Jewell, Mr. Chapman, thank you. We're looking forward to you all doing a great job there and working closely with the neighbors, and we appreciate you. Thank you so much. All right, colleagues. We'll now move to our last item of the night, a ribbon paving, water main, and water and sewer laterals on a portion of Ardmore Drive. This is a public hearing item. I'm now gonna ask if we can hear the report from staff. I believe it's Mr. Joyner.
Good evening, Mayor Shoal, members of council. I'm Robert Joyner of the Public Works Department. Item 20 is an item to consider the ordering of petition improvements on a portion of Ardmore Drive. The proposed project is inside the city limits, and staff recommends that council hold two votes. The first is, one, to accept a certificate of sufficiency for the petition and adopt a preliminary resolution. The second will be then to conduct a public hearing and then adopt a final resolution ordering the improvements to be made. Staff is available to answer any questions as necessary.
Thank you very much, Mr. Joyner. Colleagues, you have heard the report from staff. And I'm now declare this public hearing open. And I first want to ask if there are any questions for staff or members of the council. All right. We do have one person sign up to speak on this item, and that is Tamara Rogers. Madam Clerk, is Ms. Rogers with us?
I am, but I don't have questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. We appreciate you being with us. Do you have any comments that you want to make, Ms. Rogers? Ms. Rogers, do you have any comments that you'd like to make? Okay. All right, thank you. This is a public hearing item. I don't believe there's anyone else that wants to be heard. Is that correct? Oh, we do. We have two other people. Thank you. Did you text me?
Isaac Woods, Mr. Mayor.
Isaac Woods, all right. Is there anyone else?
A senior and a junior.
Oh, good, okay. So first, we will hear from Isaac Woods, Senior. Madam Clerk, could you please make Mr. Woods available to be heard?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Mr. Woods. We're glad to have you, and you have three minutes.
Yes, I'll try to be less than that because it's been a long night already, and we appreciate all your service and all of the accolades that we've given to you today. They much more appreciate it. We're just asking that we be provided- We're just asking that, we've been provided, we were before the council last year in regards to this matter, and it was denied. And as you can see on the reports that I emailed to councilmembers and the mayor, we have contaminated well with bacteria, and the water's not safe for drinking. It's been conducted by the Durham County Health Department on several other properties there. So, we're asking that the council consider making drinking water for our service and the ribbon paving available to everybody else, just like the rest of the city has. As it states in there, we're paying for, we're not asking for a free gift, we're asking for it to be done properly. We've been working on this safe drinking water. I've been involved since 2017, and I think it's the right thing to do. Mr. Mayor, I heard you talk about your granddaughter. My granddaughter doesn't know how to go to the school and drink from a water fountain because at home she can't drink from the kitchen sink. She only drinks from bottled water. So, I'm trying to raise a grandchild to understand that it's safe to drink from a water fountain and a cup of water at her school. So, this is something that, you know, we all need to just take a real deep look at and vote, and wear the shoes that we've been wearing for the last few years of unsafe drinking water and no fire protection. So, therefore, I ask the council to promptly approve this and have the city order this city water installed so that we can stop having to treat contaminated well and drink toxic water. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Mr. Woods, thank you for being with us tonight. We appreciate you. Madam Clerk, can you have Mr. Woods, Jr. available to be heard? Mr. Woods, are you available to be heard?
Hello.
Mr. Woods?
Hello.
Hello, how are you? Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My family has been living on Ardmore Drive for three generations with no street paving, fire protection services, or access to city water. My grandfather, Clyde Edwards Bailey, who is a naval veteran and one of the first black supervisors for Durham Sewer and Water Management, moved to Ardmore in 1961. This has historically been a neighborhood of black, working-class families, and today still a diverse community of blue-collar residents who have been denied basic services despite being tax-paying residents. The denial of these basic services for almost 30 years when we were annexed into the city, and the city has allowed these discriminatory conditions to continue. Please don't make the mistake that this city council made last year. I implore you to consider your humanity in this decision and ask yourself, am I going to be the human who denies this community water? The human who denies this community fire protection services? The human that denies this community a safe road to drive on? I demand water. I demand the ability to protect my community from a fire. I demand the right to a safe road for my community.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. We appreciate you being with us.
I want to thank members of the Woods family for staying with us. I remember very well our discussion about this matter when it occurred, and I'll reiterate tonight what I said then. I think this is a moral issue. It is the epitome of equity and dealing with things that have been historically baked into our infrastructure and our city, not just this city, but American cities around the country have repeated this type of patterns. I think, gonna vote for it, of course, but I do want to ask the staff that we're going to assess the folk for this work, so we're going to recoup the money as a city. How, if you can answer this, how far up the queue, or the list, or the line, will this petition and their willingness to be assessed move them as opposed to letting the processes run as regular course under our unpaved road initiative? If you can speak to that.
Robert Joyner from the Public Works Department. I believe that would move them up approximately four to five years.
Four to five years?
Yes, that's correct. If it's funded every year.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, I'm happy for them, and that, you know, money talks, but I, still, and I think this was alluded to earlier, this should just be something we do as a city. And I understand that even with that, in establishing an order of doing it, there'll be those that are further down on the list, but the ability to get four or five years shaved off of it because of the ability to pay for it, or the ability to organize your personal finances to pay for it, I don't know if these are wealthy people or not, but therein lies the whole point of our historical struggle with equity and those that have the means, you know, to get things that others wait for. So, I'm pleased to vote for this tonight. I remember the conversation, I said very well, but I hope this will also be a reminder to us of the important work that we need to do in a modern American city. Roads should be paved, water should be available, fire department should be able to get to you as a matter of course, just as a matter of basic, fundamental existence for a city. But I'm pleased to vote for it tonight. Congratulations to the residents there. And I didn't realize it was four to five years, but very happy for them. I look forward to voting for it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Freeland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also recall this, it was one of my first city council meetings when we discussed this last year, and this was one of those really hard decisions that I struggled with afterwards, and I look forward to supporting it tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo Councilmember Middleton's comments in acknowledging the inequitable aspect of this and that we have to find a better way to fund our unpaved roads and to make sure that this community does have water access so that their homes don't burn down and that their children and grandchildren can drink from the faucet. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. All right, I have a question for Mr. Joyner. Mr. Joyner, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Joyner, so, the cost of the ribbon paving and what's the total cost of the paving and all the work that we're doing here, that we would be doing?
I don't have that number directly in front of me. It's an estimate at this time.
Yeah, I'm just wanting to look at the memo.
Is it $1,222,266? Is that?
Yeah, I think that's just for the paving, right?
Right, yeah. There's another $600,000 for...
For the water line. And laterals.
So, we're talking about $1.8 million, or thereabouts, Mr. Joyner, is that right?
That's right, and it will be 100% paid for.
And so, the people that signed the petition to pay for this, to move themselves up the schedule, there, I counted about 13 different, but you'd assess every property, is that correct?
That is correct.
And how many properties are there?
I believe there are roughly around 13 to 14 properties total.
Okay. So, these folks are going to be paying a significant amount of money to be moved up this list, correct?
That is correct, yes.
He said, "I would have judged, I would judge it." Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Joyner. Colleagues, any more questions or concerns or comments for Mr. Joyner or the applicant or the petitioner? All right, thank you. All right, colleagues, I don't believe I've closed the public hearing. I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and the matter is now back before Looks like we have several, Mr. Joyner, do we have to do each of these motions?
Yes, so, if you would have the first motion, you actually can do it in two motions. If you would have the first one to accept the sufficiency of the petition.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the sufficiency of the certificate.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there a second?
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Reese. May the motion by Councilmember Freeman, seconded by Councilmember Reese, that we accept a certificate of sufficiency. Madam Clerk, can you please open the vote? Can you please close the vote? Thank you.
The motion passes 7-0.
Thanks. Can we do all the...
And then, next, you would adopt a preliminary resolution by vote.
All right. Colleagues, can I have a motion to adopt a preliminary resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Freeman, seconded by Councilmember Freeland, to adopt a preliminary resolution on proposed local improvements. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes 7-0.
Right.
And then, a final motion to adopt a final resolution ordering the improvements if council so wishes.
Thank you. Colleagues, the motion will be to adopt a final resolution ordering the making of local improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Freeman, seconded by Councilmember Caballero. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
And the motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. Thank you to Mr. Woods and the neighborhood for presenting the petition, and thank you, Mr. Joyner. Colleagues, before we adjourn, this was our last item. I did want to just put, just ask our staff to consider one thing, and you two colleagues, I won't be here for it, but I don't know if we have, do we have public hearings on the 6th of December? We do? Yeah. I think that the 6th is going to be, I don't know how crowded it will be after the organizational meeting. I wonder if people are going to go home. I think it would be a lot easier for the council if we had the primary staff people who are, it would move things along a lot quicker if we had the primary staff people who were doing the reporting. Like if Mike Stock and Bill Judge had been here tonight, I think we could have moved through this more quickly. I know we're balancing that against our desire to keep not many people in the room, so I'm not, I'm just wanting, I'm just going to ask staff, if y'all could think about that, and just, and colleagues and staff, if y'all could think about that, I think it might help us. So, just a thought. All right, colleagues, thank you all so much. I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned at 11:01 PM. Last time I hit the gavel, y'all.
We'll be back here Thursday, right?
Yep, see you on Thursday.
That's when you get to serve.
See you Thursday, right here in this room.
Mr. Mayor.
Who is this?
Mr. Mayor.
Good night, ladies.
Good night.
The dinner was delicious.
Like that, yes.
But I ate too much. I'm like, oh, man. It was so good.
It was great.
I was so glad to see it.